Seven o'clock, so I'll call this meeting to order. Before we do the roll call, I will note to my colleagues on the commission that we do have a new member. Last evening, Mayor Bean and the council unanimously approved Commissioner Gerard to rejoin our commission. So hopefully he doesn't need too much training on what we do here. But I personally will welcome you back, Paul. Karen, can you please take a roll call?
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
I got you. Commissioner Batty.
Here.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Keen.
Here.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
You're cutting in and out a little bit, Karen.
Can you guys hear me? I'm having some, I'm having some bad connection problems. So I have, I have Commissioner Young, I have Commissioner Batty, Commissioner Miller absent, Commissioner Keen.
Yes.
Commissioner Brink.
Here.
Commissioner Gerard.
Here.
And Chair Lagnes.
Present. Next, we will ask that you join us in our nation's pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic.
Which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Justice. Next is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the agenda.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Brink moves, Commissioner Batty seconds. Is there discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Karen, can you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner, Commissioner Keen.
Aye.
Commissioner Batty.
Aye.
Commissioner Brink.
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard.
Aye.
And Chair Lagnes.
Aye, motion carries. Item number five, approved planning commission meeting minutes from December 9th, 2020. Commissioners, is there a motion? Commissioner Young.
Both approval.
Commissioner Young moves, is there a second? Commissioner Keen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the planning commission meeting minutes from December 9th? Seeing none, Karen, can you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Batty.
Aye.
Commissioner Keen.
Aye.
Commissioner Brink.
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard.
Abstain.
Commissioner Gerard.
He said.
Oh, I thought that was Dennis Batty, sorry. And Chair Lagnes.
Aye, motion carries. We're on item number six, preliminary planned unit development application, Forest Hills Farm second edition. This does include a public hearing prior to commissioners taking into consideration a motion. So for those in attendance, how this works, we will, and this is a two-part. So item number six is a preliminary planned unit development application, and item number seven is a preliminary plat application. The staff report will distinguish the difference between those two. So we'll have Donovan explain the staff position and recommendations first, and then we will move into questions from commissioners on the staff report. We'll then allow the developer an opportunity, questions from commissioners on that, and then we will open up the public hearing. And after the public hearing closes, we'll then bring it back to commissioners. Donovan, do you want to kick us off, please?
Certainly, I'd like to present the preliminary PUD and preliminary plat applications for Forest Hills Farm second edition. The, the property, of course, is at the, near the location of the Forest Hills Farm one, which is just the northwest of the North Shore Trail and Highway 97 intersection. It's seen here. When the original Forest Hills Farm one was, was developed, this, this property was rough graded and trees cleared anticipation of the lots that would be here. However, it was never reached that final plat stage and was for sale for many years and now comes on, you know, before us, a sub, minor, major subdivision of 35 lots, single, for single-family homes. Access is from North Shore Trail. And basically, the same road network that you can see here is, is proposed with a looping road and then a cul-de-sac leading to, onto the north here. There are wetlands on the site and about 27 acres in size. About 24 of those are developable outside, you know, the steep slopes and the wetland areas. There is public sewer stubbed in up to the edge of the property and then private wells will serve the proposed homes. The, the applicant is Jaren Johnson, who is the person, actually the builder, who is building out Hedwars 12th Lots, the 19 lots there. And he's bringing forth the site plan that you can see. And just to distinguish between the two applications, he had, he has applied for a planning development, the PUD, since there are a number, 11 lots that don't contain the minimum 25,000 square feet in area and 35 lots that do not have the 100-foot minimum width. However, all lots are at least 15,000 square feet in area in 80 feet in width. The, so this, in, there's places where, you know, you can see where some of the lots are much larger. You know, some, you know, almost even one down here, almost an acre in size. So the, so the side, the areas really vary. What's something unique about this property is that during the first phase, the Outlot D was dedicated to the city as a park. It's about 19 acres and that satisfied the parkland dedication requirements for, for this entire area. As part of the, the PUD application, however, I recommended to the, to the applicant that the city should require something of a public benefit that will accrue to the city, you know, as part of this, you know, basically in exchange for the increased lot count, which also, by the way, puts the minimum density about to what the, the comprehensive plan designates for this area, for this low-density housing area. So basically, the overall density, I'm sorry, upland developable density is about 1.4 dwelling units per acre and that minimum comp plan, density is 1.5 dwelling units per acre. The, so what I proposed as a requirement to, you know, in exchange here is that the developer do this improvement where a 10-foot by 2-mis trail comes, is connecting to the existing trail from the first, first connection where there is a public easement over this leading to the Caroline Court Road in there. I believe it's Caroline Court. And then meeting out to here and then also leading to here. And then if you look within, as part of the, the first phase, there was a trail that was developed, basically a nature trail that, that leads through here that was initially graded but is in a little bit of rough shape and needs to be regraded and then woodchips put down with benches placed along here. I'm recommending three, also a bench in this Outlot A. One of the two outlots that will be, you know, continue to be owned by the HOA and maintained by the HOA, but would provide a really great amenity for the residents of both neighborhoods and basically create about a mile loop from, you know, that includes, you know, this proposed trail, the woodchip trail, as well as the sidewalk within Forest Hills Farm one. So that is, you know, I think it would be a great benefit for the, for the development and would, you know, be part of what the city would require in exchange for the increased number of lots. So that is, that is the planning development to, you know, to allow that flexibility with the lot sizes. The preliminary plat is essentially just the lot, the lots design, the actual plat that gets recorded. And, you know, something that's part of all major subdivisions. The landscaping plan does show deciduous trees on the, you know, planted, you know, near the street and adding up to, you know, in addition to the forested areas. Still many, many trees are still on the site, as you can see from that aerial photo I showed you initially. And the woodland preservation plan was not submitted at this time.
Did we lose Donovan?
I think we may have. Donovan, I think you're frozen. I'll send him a text message.
At work, usually it is me who is the one that is in and out of, of a meeting. For some reason, Skype and, and I do not get along at all. And our IT folks have tried for three weeks to get my Skype access stable. So it feels kind of nice for me for once not to be the problem child.
I think we may have lost Karen there for a second, too.
I am back.
I flipped to me. All right, Donovan, I believe we had you up to the point you were going to describe the woodland preservation.
Okay, thank you. So the, there's no woodland preservation plan that was submitted with this preliminary submittal. There is, I did send the applicant a 2000, 2020, 2007 plan. It was approved by the city. And essentially, what we're looking for here is a, you know, a kind of off-limits to tree removal, basically construction limits line that would be shown, basically following the area where the actually is existing, where the existing tree cover is, to make sure those trees are preserved. And I did say earlier that the, you know, this is the landscaping plan we're looking at and two deciduous trees are proposed for each lot in which would also supplement the, the trees that are on each lot to, to meet those minimum tree requirements. No sign just proposed at this time. And a neighborhood meeting was held and about 18 residents participated. And there were concerns about the name of Forest Hills Farms, concerns about ATV traffic. It seemed like most of the residents were from Forest Hills Farm one, first edition. And they were concerned about, you know, some, you know, trespassing onto their shoreline lot and, and things that, you know, wouldn't be, you know, basically out of the control of this developer. But, you know, something that I believe would be correct, it would be appropriate to, you know, have signage on both the entrance, the eastern terminus of this woodchip trail and western terminus, identifying as a public trail and also identifying, you know, back to where, you know, you know, where, where, where there is public, you know, where the public easements are, both on the, the, I'll jump over to the aerial where you can see the, you know, you're the, you know, one, one end of the trail here is a public easement as well as this other end of the woodchip trail that comes through and comes up here to the, to the Caroline Court cul-de-sac. And there's questions about the size of the homes and things that relate to, you know, what was the actual build-out and ATV traffic potentially through the, through the Caroline Court street. And, you know, the developer, you know, said he would consider the, you know, the, he was open, he was considering a name change and he, you know, did assure the residents he was, he was building a quality product and encouraged them to reach out to him personally if they wanted, you know, virtual tours of homes and that sort of thing. And, you know, the, for the, the PUD review criteria, staff finds, I find that there is, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and, and won't have an adverse impact on the environment surrounding properties or public facilities. And the, also reviewing the plat review criteria for the planning commission, I don't believe the plat contains any criteria for denial. And the Watershed District is reviewing this application regarding the stormer permitting and sediment erosion control permitting. And, you know, Ryan has, has comments. You know, city engineer has comments that I assume will be addressed in the, the final submission. And, you know, at, at this point, the recommendation is for approval of the preliminary PUD application and preliminary plat with, with conditions related to, you know, the concerns of the city engineer being met as well as the, you know, permitting, required permits from the Watershed District be obtained, that the, the trail improvement and the woodchip trail improvement be, be installed as well as a development agreement and our required city financials be submitted. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions from the planning commission.
Commissioners, do you have questions on the staff report? Commissioner Young.
I have several questions. One, Donovan, the city has challenges, significant challenges, where we have public access to, for instance, Forest Lake, Clear Lake, between lots. And over time, people decide that they don't want that access between lots and they, they either chase people off or they, they fence it or whatever. This is not only trails for these two subdivisions, but it is my understanding that is a condition of the PUD that these are public trails for anybody in Forest Lake to use. One, these are public trails, correct? And two, how is the city going to make sure that access is maintained?
Well, access has been there for over a dozen years. The trail has been in city possession. I mean, the woodchip trails, it's pretty rough now, it is a nature trail. Not much woodchips left. This, you know, this probably will provide, you know, greater access to it because residents can, on both sides, you know, visit the trail. On the, in that, you might have noticed or just may have visited that Caroline Court side, there are parking spaces in the cul-de-sac. And there is a public easement over that asphalt trail leading to the woodchip trail. So there is, no, it is a privately owned, you know, HOA-owned outlot. I don't have any concerns about that, you know, public access being maintained because it's there in writing and it's not something that, it's, I think it's a little different than those lots you refer to where it's often pretty much neglected and, you know, and people inquire because they think that it's, the city's essentially forgotten about it, but I don't believe that's the case here.
Several of the folks in the public meeting seemed rather surprised that people from outside the subdivision would be able to come to those trails and use those trails. So I am concerned about that. How, is it the city's plan that to get to that 19-acre parkland that, that there will be access through those nature trails?
I'm not sure if I understood, I mean, the access will be from city streets on both, on both ends, you know?
No, to the, there's the, the large 19-acre parkland that was dedicated as part of the, the two, is the access to that planned to be from the nature trails? And then you would jump on those within one of the two subdivisions?
Yes, yeah, the access, I mean, there's a, there's a little bit of land that touches onto North Shore Trail, but it's, it, you know, it, it's, that's not a real feasible way to, to access it. So it would be from that, that northern, the road identified as Kenneth Court in, in the plat or else from the Caroline Court's cul-de-sac.
My biggest concern is that these properties will be on wells, especially with the narrow lots. If any of the wells are situated in the back of the property, considering the narrow lots, the significant size of the homes that the developer is proposing, when those wells need to be worked on, pumps need to be dealt with, getting between houses and getting to the wells is going to be a problem. I also have some concerns that you've got a lot of wells, a very large number of wells for modern houses that will be drawing a significant amount of water. I'm a little bit worried about cone of depression. I'm, that, that hasn't been a problem in the first subdivision because those lots are much larger and there are a few of them in the, the area. But how are we going to make sure that there is sufficient space on each lot for the wells to exist if they are, and be serviced if they're not in the middle of the front yards?
Well, that's certainly a challenge for the builder, but what I've seen on the, the first one, they're, they've done the, the wells in the front yard, easily accessed. And, but that would, you know, of course, if the, if the Department of Health thinks that, you know, there's, there's issues with proximity, maybe they will do more than one lot, one well per, per house. I guess that is a possibility. I was talking about that with Ryan today in Scandia, he's seen some developments like that. But in this case, I think that's, I'd like to throw that question over to John Bender, who is the engineer for the project, who's also on this call.
One of, one of my concerns is that we will be saying, yes, these narrow lots are okay, when we may have concerns about the ability to service wells and the number of wells on these narrow lots. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about that. And that'll do it for right now.
Commissioner Batty, I saw your hand up as well.
I had a concern about the wells as well, and I just wanted to expand just a little bit further on that. I'm just looking at a plan here on my other screen. The, where, how, how close is city water to this, this pro, this development?
At the Castlewood Golf Course.
So what's that?
That's over a mile.
Not in our lifetimes.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
So, and then, and then this, the Outlot D, it doesn't, we don't have a map that shows the topography of that. Is that something, did the Outlot, Outlot D happen as part of the first?
It did, yeah.
Yeah, that's already a done deal and, and, okay. So there's no point in even asking about it. But I'm, I'm just curious about the access. I don't see any, you know, unless there is going, unless they're thinking about an access between the back of lots, one 20, oh, let's see, looks like 21, 22, and 23 between that and Lot 10 of the previous. Is that, is that an actual lot there or is that, is that a potential access to that? I'm just, I'm just curious where, where they thought access to this outlot might be if it is ever developed as a park.
Well, just, just through those, basically through the, the cul-de-sacs. It's, there's a really steep slope there. I could, I could, if you want, I could zero in and show you the topo, topographical lines. It's really beautiful back there, I was really impressed.
No, I'm just, but physically, how are we going to get to it? That's.
Through, through the woodchip trail.
Okay.
So the.
Through the, through the.
So we're not planning on vehicular traffic back to this park?
No.
Okay, that's, that's what I was, so it's just an, it's just a nature preserve type thing. It's not a park that's going to be developed with parking, parking for automobiles or that sort of thing. That's, there's, yeah, because there's really no access, you know, shown for vehicular traffic.
Yeah, well, ATVs are, are back there, you can see, you can see the, the tread marks.
Are there questions on the staff report, Commissioners? Commissioner Gerard?
Donovan, you know, this is a pretty, to the point just made on the park, it's a very deep ravine there and there's quite a bit of slope. Have, have they even started the preliminary, how many of these housing pads might be within the bluff line, which would give us different setback?
Well, the, the bluff line would apply if it was in the Shoreland Everly District, it's my understanding. But this, these, this property doesn't meet the three criteria for being in the Shoreland Everly District. That's my first thought, but I'll, I, I can look closer, but I, I don't think, I mean, just from, you know, being out on the site and then also because of the, the grading activities have already occurred, the building pads are, do not appear to be too close to that, that, you know, the steep slopes.
Other questions on the staff report? Commissioner Batty?
Just one other quick question, and that is, Just one other quick question, and that is looks like they're showing, except for this, the kind of what I call a main road, east, east-west road in there. The cul-de-sac and the loop are like, are only shown as, the pavement is, or back to curb, back curb is only like 28 feet. Is that? I'm assuming that meets our criteria?
For the yes and no. We are going to allow a narrower street width for that loop road and call it one-way. That's what the discussion's been so far. I believe that's the latest we've had. They propose a narrower right-of-way. I think that you know, the city engineer will hold fast on the traditional, you know, 60-foot right-of-way and 32-foot curb-to-curb street dimension there on that.
So what, so how does that? Is that, is that a I mean, I'm just kind of curious. I mean, I know this is, this is the first look right at the, the PUD and the preliminary plat, and this will come back for another, we'll, we'll see this again, right? Just
Correct.
The normal course of things. So that's something that's going to be addressed.
Yes.
And not just talked about, we're going to actually see a subdivision layout here with the correct right-of-way widths and, and that kind of detail.
Yeah.
I don't see, the other thing is I don't see any attention at all to stormwater on, on this site plan that's been submitted.
Okay.
Highly unusual to me.
So there, there is, basically, with that initial grading, they did put areas for stormwater management. And of course, rules have changed and it becomes stricter, so they need to expand those areas, increase the capacity. So they are there and there's actually some piping in there. If you go back into that, for instance, there's one of the ponds in Outlet D, you can actually now see, you know, where those ponds were, initial ponds were developed. The, so there's, I mean, there's, there's a full, there is a full plan, so they have addressed it.
So there are more plans here than what we're seeing, is that?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the grading plan should show those more, I think, would show solid, if you want to take a look with me, we can, we can show you, but it, I mean, they do have an active application before the, the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District.
Commissioner Young, I believe you had your hand up next, and then I'll call on you, Commissioner Keen.
Narrow, with narrower streets, where are they going to put the freaking snow? I mean, if, if your streets are narrower, and, and I'm looking at the way that these, these houses are sort of planned to be quite close to the street, so I'm not really sure that there's room for wells the way they've got it looking right now in the front yards. The Karen Court, you can probably throw most of the snow toward North Shore. I'm afraid that they only plow it one way. Is that going to be HOA-plowed, or is that city-plowed? Who maintains the street?
My, I haven't, I, Public Works hasn't indicated to me, the director Dave Adams hasn't indicated to me that this is a situation where they would, he would require, require the HOA plowing, though, of course, that there are situations in the city where that is indeed the case, of course. And, but these, I mean, these are 80-foot lots. I mean, this is 80-foot lots similar to what they have all throughout Chestnut Creek. And, you know, I think the, the minimum, you know, I think over in the first phase, it's, they're 100 feet, so it's not like they're, I mean, obviously, it's a fifth smaller. But still, they're, they're, they're large lots. I mean, no lot is smaller than that third acre size.
Commissioner Keen?
Well, I had, I had some questions about the stormwater and the holding ponds, but I guess that's on some other plans. Also, who's going to, I know it's a, is that a city trail then? And the city's going to maintain those trails? Because I've been through those trails just this last summer, and the ATVs, I mean, they're, they're pretty rutted up.
Yeah.
And there's tree, there's trees hanging, hanging over and some were down. People come by with chainsaws and just cut a path and but the ATVs are really rutting that trail up. And I saw, I'm almost sure I saw signs that said it's a private trail.
Well, that's, that was one of the things, it was a topic of conversation at the neighborhood meeting, was the basically the lack of city maintenance there. That's something that we'll, you know, address with Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission. And what I propose as a condition of approval is regrading that trail so that it, you know, it, it is, becomes flat and just more comfortable to walk on again with, with woodchips as well. But, you know, no, no more improvement than that since is, essentially, it's a nature trail.
Well, well, when you're riding ATVs all over it, that's not really natural.
Well, that's something also, I think, is an enforcement issue they will have to tackle. It's kind of, obviously, some of the topic tonight, but it's an enforcement issue that we'll have to follow up on.
Commissioner Young?
Donovan, does the city plan on putting signs up to say "public trail"?
Yeah. Thought I included that in the memo. That was because something came out of the, the public meeting. You know, realize that the need for that, so we'll, we'll make sure that's, it's part of the final approval condition.
Other questions on the staff report? I have a, I have a couple. Donovan, during the open house, one item that was noted by, I believe it was the resident to the north of the development with a concern about some litigation regarding a property line. And the only question I have on it, because I know there's court cases with numerous parties in that, that we're not completely privy to. Are you do we have enough information to be sufficient that that would not impact this particular development's application for consideration?
We don't have enough information at this time. I'd like to leave that question to Jaren, because he and I have discussed it, and I think he can provide the latest information on that.
Okay, I, I can ask that at his point. The next piece is the, the public loop trail that goes through this development, the the property between Phase 1 and Phase 2 is owned by the HOA of Phase 1. And there is a, I believe there's a covered bridge or something on there that is the trail. And so I understand that the city has an easement. Do we own the covered bridge? Does the HOA own it? And who maintains that?
The HOA owns it. Actually, I was reading it, it's made from a barn that used to be on the site. But no, there is just simply a public easement access, so all maintenance is still, is still private.
And so if 20 years down the road, that bridge needs repair, paint, and that HOA decides we don't want other people on this trail system coming through our neighborhood, as was expressed in the neighborhood meeting, what recourse does the city have to manage that?
Well, it, it is an easement, access easement. So, I mean, basically, the right-of-access is what the city has. You know, whether there's a bridge or not, I think would be subject of, you know, future conversation. But, you know, unless that's somehow, you know, the city, you know, you know, vacates that easement, it remains there. And I gather, what I gathered from the meeting was, most, most of the concern was around motorized vehicles, ATVs coming through there. So that was where, you know, they sought to prohibit that kind of traffic, but not pedestrian traffic, from what I gathered.
The, the last question I have, the parkland dedication fee. So I understand, and I actually remember when this development passed, I think Commissioner Young might have been a council member back then, that the, the land there would be given to the city for park in lieu of the financial contribution per home that would otherwise be customary. And so that was under the premise of a smaller number of homes for the net development. If at that time, the city had known that there was going to be a greater number of homes, I would have presumed there would have been a greater contribution. Am I correct?
This, well, the, it's, it's a land contribution, and the way the rules are written down, which I assume were, were similar then, the, it was basically a 10% of the upland would, would be the contribution. And obviously, you know, that 19 acres, well, there's a lot of it that's not upland. There's a lot of wetlands within that. I'm not sure how much with that, how many acres there are. But the way the development agreement was written, that it was, you know, this, this dedication satisfies requirement for, you know, these two, the development of these two lots. So it didn't link it to, to numbers of of units, you know, lots created. And so I don't see that there's a, there's, you know, in some of those cases we have, where there was actually, the way that the agreement was written, you know, there was, the city could come back. It's happened with a couple Gateway Green, you know, lots. But in this case, it's more related to the, you know, satisfies the requirement for the development of this land. So I don't believe that there is any, the city can come back and, you know, look for that difference in lots or else increase in the parkland dedication fee.
So, so it would be out of city authority to seek a parkland dedication, whether that would be land or fee based on the differential between the previous approved development and the proposed?
Right. I mean, to me, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, but I'll, I'll follow up with the city attorney. I think it's, it's worth a second look to make sure we get it right.
And ultimately, I think that question really is of parks, lakes, and trails to consider, but I think it's worth looking at, because I don't remember a proposal that would fit this type of characteristics, at least anytime recently. And so if we have that authority, I, I think we should consider that precedent moving forward. Commissioner Young, I believe I saw your hand go up again?
No.
No, I apologize.
Mr. Gerard.
Oh, Commissioner Gerard?
My memory serves me right, and I'm getting older, so it may or may not. This was a parkland dedic, this original plat included both Forest Hills 1 and Forest Hill 2, and then there was a separation. So I think we're fine on the park dedication, if memory serves me right. And then I don't know exactly what happened with the owners of the properties and why there was only the 23 houses built, and this other half went back to the other owners. I, I think we're good as far as the dedication, but again, we'll let Donovan, let us know that.
Other questions on the staff report? Seeing none. Karen, are you able to bring in Jaren? And anyone else that's presenting for the developer?
John Bender is here to represent the application.
I'm sorry, John?
Yeah, I don't have an option of moving people into the meeting. I'm not really sure why.
Oh. Did I, maybe I got on before you did? I can do that.
No, then you would have to be administrator of the meeting, and so I'm not sure what happened.
Donovan is showing his host.
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened there. So he's the one that has to move people in and out of the meeting now.
Yeah, here he comes.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry, John, I can do better than that. So we can see your face.
So, so John, welcome to the Planning Commission. You're free to add anything else that you wish that may have been missed and answer questions that might come up. The only one I recall was my own regarding the property line concern, discussed in the neighborhood meeting, and then we'll open it up for Commissioner questions to you as well.
Okay, and I, I do, I do know that Jaren is logged in. I'm not sure if, if Donovan, you're able to give him access or not. I will, so I, I was trying to take notes. I think the two questions were or three questions. There is a question about snow removal, a question about the wells and the separation, and then the question about the property line, possible dispute with that. So regarding the, the wells, generally, well separation, the, the primary concern when it comes to wells is generally separation between the wells and, and any septic systems. Usually, when there's a well, there's also a septic system because you're offline of any city utilities. But in this case, we do have city sanitary sewer, so we don't need any septic systems. So the separation for wells becomes less stringent. And of course, we're going to, we'll go through any Department of Health permitting required for the well, for the wells and the separation. Regarding the snow removal, you know, I, I know we'll work with your Public Works to make sure that our final plans meet their needs as far as snow removal goes, but I can say that 80-foot wide lots is, those are, those are large lots. Those, that's much larger than most new developments nowadays. They're usually in the 60 to 65 foot wide. And, and those generally also work for snow removal. So I think we will be okay with the 80-foot, but certainly we'll work with staff and Public Works to make sure that those concerns are addressed. And then hopefully, Jaren's able to, to log in. He's more up to speed on that on that lot line issue, but I, I will say what I know about it. There, from what I understand, there are some landowners north of the city parkland, the outlot that we've been talking about, the park dedication, that are concerned or claiming that the property line, as it is platted, is incorrect and should actually be further south. And it, it, it varies a little bit. It's, it's roughly 40 to 45 feet discrepancy on the west end over towards the lake, and then over towards the east end where our Kenneth Court, our cul-de-sac on the east side, goes up close to the city park. In that area, it's about a 25-foot discrepancy. What I can tell you is that in 2003, when the first work was done to lay out the, the property and the, the initial preliminary plating was done, there was an altar that was done, and we did find irons that were consistent with the lot line as we show it. And as, as the altar was drafted back in 2003, we did just, within the last week, we went out there again and verified more irons that are consistent with the lot line as it's shown. The, the, the neighborhood, or the neighbors to the north, they're, they're basing their, their concern on, on the fact that their fence lines go further south than this property line. And their, their argument is that the the, the fence line should, should dictate where the property line is. I'm, I'm, I'm not a real estate attorney, so I can't speak to that, but I can tell you that the survey information that we have gathered appears to be consistent that the lot line, the north lot line of the city park outlot is consistent with what is drawn. I'm not sure, Eric, if that adequately answers your question, but.
That, that helps. I do see Jaren is on as well. He'll just have to unmute if he had something to add to that.
Yes, you're here?
Yep.
Hey, well, thank you all for being in this meeting, that apparently I had to put together in this part of it, but I, I do want to kind of reflect a little bit in saying that this isn't a brand-new idea. Like, this, this plat that I'm proposing to do is something that was talked about and at, at least in my opinion, preliminary approved years ago. I, I live on, in Forest Lake. I, I live on, in Forest Lake and I hope that at least some of you know who I am as a builder. And my father and I, and you know, we, we try to bring a good product and a good house. The community is at a fair price and I have been, over the last four or five years approached by a social group who owned the property to build houses in there. And I, I kept trying to talk them into doing it. I said, yes, I, I, I know that I could build a house that people would enjoy living in at a fair price and, and build their development out. And they, for some reason decided not to do it. And in a way, I guess, put me in a position to say, well, I don't want to lose out because I love that property. It's gorgeous and I, I know what it could bring to Forest Lake and I know there's 35 homeowners out there that'd be proud to live in there and it would match the surroundings just great. So I, I don't want to, I don't want you guys to forget that this isn't like a brand new idea because I, I've done a brand new development. I'm, I'm not a blowhard developer. I'm not a guy that knows it all. I did Heimlich Villas up by Wyoming and that was a brand new idea. And it's worked out really well. Not doing that same concept, but you know, there's been a lot of talk I've been listening to and it's kind of like miniscule, like a lot of this we've already talked about and it was approved. So let's just get, get through some of those points and honestly, stormwater and the runoff and all that, the watershed district is way beyond what they were two, five, 10 years ago. So we'll get that figured out. So I just want you guys to know that, that we're not, we're not trying to push something that shouldn't be done there. They're going to hold us to what we need to do times 10, in my opinion. These stormwater districts are interesting and we're going to do what's right. On top of that, I feel that our 80 foot wide lots, they are bigger than if a, if a national builder bought that property or a big regional builder brought that property. I really think they'd be coming in guns out, saying this is what we're going to do. I, I appreciate what's there and I don't want my in Headwaters, my 50 to 60 foot lots or in Heimlich 65 foot wide lots. I want to make sure I have nice, good looking homes. Wide looking homes that brings an impression of value and, and deep backyards and we're not going to kind of cut up and go into the backyard and cut down trees we shouldn't be doing. What's there? If, if any of you wants to walk with me, I'd appreciate that. And what's there is, is a great, great idea that, that Al, I don't know if Al's on here. I think he might be listening. And, you know, he did a great thing for that, that vision. And the Johnson Tree Farm, like it's, it's unique that that's my last name and I, I want to preserve what's there. But it is a proposed development and there should be nice homes in there. And I just want to get to the point where we can bring nice homes, very nice homes to Forest Lake. But we don't need to beat up the budget to have, have to force million dollar homes in there because that's not what Forest Lake wants. And it's not what we can afford to do, you know, anybody. So I guess that's kind of my introduction to what, what we're doing here.
All right. Did, did you have anything additional, John?
No, other than perhaps there may have been a question about the stormwater. Should, should I address that or?
You certainly, you certainly can now. Otherwise I'll open it up to questions from commissioners directly to you.
Okay. So I, I think Donovan actually covered it fairly well. He's, he's correct that when the project was originally roughly, rough graded ponds were constructed at that time. They were constructed for the stormwater rules that existed at that time. And as Jaren had mentioned, the Comfort Lake, Forest Lake Watershed District has much more stringent rules now. So we did. Our, our plan presents that we will expand the existing ponds to enhance its stormwater management and we will adhere to the current rules and we will be held to that requirement because we need to get the watershed permit. So we are aware of it and we are addressing it with the improvements that we're proposing for the ponds.
All right. Well, thank you. Commissioners, are there questions of the applicant? Commissioner Young.
I guess if we were looking at what was proposed before, we would not be being asked to give this a, a PUD with 11 lots that don't contain the minimum 25,000 square feet and 35 lots that don't have our existing 100 foot minimum width. So this is not brand new, never thought of before, but it is not where we have gone before on this. And, and so, you know, that is why we have significant questions.
Can I, can I ask a question? What about Chestnut Creek?
Every zoning district and every zoning code in Forest Lake has differing requirements. And
I'm just asking, I, I just.
Yeah. And, and that, that was an area that was zoned differently with different sized lots as the minimum. And so just as your, your headwaters area has a significant difference than this area does. And that's one of the things that, that, you know, a zoning code and, and our comp plan has a variety of housing, a variety of lot types and sizes. So you are asking for something different. And there is no way that we would be, I at least, would ever be considering 40, 30 or 45 foot lots in this area.
Are there other questions of the applicant from commissioners? Commissioner Betty?
I guess my questions and comments about street width and stuff like that. You know, it wasn't designed to put Jaren, I wasn't designed to put you on the defensive here. I just, I was just looking for information and just saw some things that were a little bit different than what we've seen in other things. So, but the, the other thing I, I, I looked at these, I knew that these landscape plans were oriented 90 degrees and it was confusing as all get out to start with. Maybe next time when you put the presentation together, Donovan, you just return these drawings 90 degrees, even though the printing and what have you, I understand why it's the way it is because so it fit on the drawing and you could do it at a larger scale. But it would help us if that was oriented the same way as the other drawings, even if the text on it was, I'd rather have the text at 90 degrees than the layout at 90 degrees. But I did. I started going through that a little bit more carefully and did see that there are, even though they're not necessarily specifically identified as stormwater retention ponds, they are graded so that that's probably what they are. They're not. And I see that they are located in several locations around, around the development. So just wanted to say that.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, Jared, this, this is your time to respond to commissioner questions. Go ahead.
Listen, um, I, I do not mean to be, if I sound like I was on the defense, I apologize. I'm not on it at all. I, I really feel that I could bring a really good thing to Forest Lake. I, I see a demand for it, what I'm offering. I see very fair lot sizes for what's there. I, I feel that what I build and, and what people are asking me to do is a good thing. I'm not looking to change something that shouldn't be there. And I really want you all to know that, that, you know, if anyone wants to go walk the property with me and look at it, you know, I, John and I will come out and walk around and, and look at that property. It's unique. The reason we're at 35 lots is, is honestly because it needs to be to make the work for anybody. And I don't think we're out of line asking for what we're doing for 80 foot wide lots. Because I bet you down the road, I'm hoping you'll see me in front of this, hopefully not Zoom all the time, maybe in a city meeting after COVID. But, you know, this is down the road, developing won't be 80 foot wide lots in city Forest Lake. It just is not going to be anymore. Can be financially, it just isn't going to work. And uniquely, this development is there for that opportunity. And, and I think what houses that we can bring on that are going to look very nice. We'll have very nice, big backyards, very big, nice front yards. Enough trees and it's, it's going to be, in my opinion, the nicest community in Forest Lake with addition of First Lake Edition, you know? Yeah, I'm that's what I feel. Honestly, I'm not trying to pull something off or push something through that shouldn't be, but I, I welcome any invites to people that want to meet with me out there or at a model home and, and look at it together. You know, it's, I, I'm pretty confident about that. When it's done, it's going to be very, very nice.
I, I will note, Jaren, this commission is well known for asking lots of questions and it doesn't always mean that they're concerned about the project.
No, I know. I, I just, I'm just trying to make sure, you know?
Are there other questions of the applicant from commissioners? Dennis, did you, or Commissioner Betty, did you have your hand up? All right, we will, thank you, Jaren and John. If you guys just want to put yourself on mute, we will move into the public hearing next. And then following the public hearing, we'll bring it back to commission. Sometimes we have additional questions after the public hearing. So kind of just hang out for a little bit. It is 8:01 and we will open up the public hearing. So if you wish to speak, you can do so either at the physical city hall or online. And all you need to do is raise your hand by hitting the raise hand feature or click chat and state that you wish to be brought into the meeting and we'll bring you in one by one. Donovan, do we have anyone at city hall wishing to speak to this item?
No one is at city hall at this moment. Karen, I'd like to make you the host so you can kind of conduct, you can administer this piece. You're the host now.
And as, as people are brought in, if you could state your name and address for the record so that we have who you are and speaking to the, the public. Typically commissioners don't engage at this point in a public hearing, although staff may on occasion answer a technical question that may be asked. So Karen, who do we have up first?
I'm not really sure. I don't see any hands raised, so.
All right. If no one wishes to speak on this item, I will wait about 45 seconds and, and call it out again before closing the public hearing if there is no one. All right, Donovan, has anyone walked in city hall?
No.
Thank you. Karen, has anyone raised their hand or indicated they wish to speak in the public hearing?
It does not look like it. Nope.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing at 8:03 PM and bring it back to commissioners for consideration of the preliminary planned unit development application. Commissioners? No comments from anyone. I can start. Um, so I, I heard the concern, I don't remember which commissioners it was that were concerned about the narrower width and I think on the, the primary roads through that development, that that is important to maintain that as right, as well as the right of way. Although on the one-way loop, it would be on the, the more western cul-de-sac in the development. I, I do understand why we might allow a narrower street width in that particular small section, which is what I read into the plan. I think the loop trail completion and connection to North Shore is beneficial, not only to these two developments, this and the phase one section, but also to residents in the area. I personally live less than a mile north of here, where we are relatively distant from established parks and trails where we pretty much have to jump in the car. And this, this makes for a great place where we can go take a nice loop, one mile walk. And I think that's a huge benefit to the city having this development. The, the minimal, I think it's relatively minimal, although a 25, 20% decrease or increase, whichever way you look at it on, on the lot width. I think is, is something I can deal with here because there's city sewer and those distances between the wells and the sewer there. If this property did not have sewer on it and it had septic, I might be much more stringent in that. Although I will say I do like the plan better that was presented 10, 15 years ago with the, the wider and less lots, although I'm comfortable with the current one. Other commissioners have discussion or motion? Commissioner Betty?
Donovan, just, just take us through process here on, on what happens. Let's just say we do. Our, our motion is to approve this for the next step. What, what happens next?
So of course, it's, you know, just the PUD and preliminary plan is also part of this. Next step is for the project team to submit something that addresses the engineer's comments. And, and I think it's, they are having their, their Comfort Lake Washington District Board review sometime this month. I forget which day it is. And, but basically they need to submit a plan that addresses these initial comments. And this is one of the first applications that's subdivisions that's coming through where it's going to be the, where the city engineer is designing the public infrastructure. And so what will be delivered to the city is a, a grading plan and the, the lots as approved by, you know, lot configuration approved by council. And and then Ryan will, will, will basically design these, design the public infrastructure, everything within the public right of way. From then that comes back to planning commission. I'm sorry, that actually is a final plat. Well, the final plat goes directly to council, but the, the final PUD does come back to planning commission. And so you have another look at it. So you, and we can, you know, see more. Clearly we can, you know, we can also present more information regarding the stormwater or whatnot that and you know, and one thing that I'll say that I think I included in the staff memo, but I did not include as one conditions, but is to include that, you know, public trail signage to clarify that. So that those concerns from neighbors are addressed. But we, you know, we see, we see all that as, as part of that final PUD, including the, the woodland preservation plan. But, but definitely the planning commission gets another look at this, at this, for that final PUD review.
Chairman Langish, I, I would then make a motion that we approve this step of the process and move it forward to the next.
Is your, for, for, for clarification, Commissioner Betty, is your recommendation as outlined in the staff report?
As outlined in the staff report with the conditions, addressing the conditions that are, that are put forth by both the planner and the city engineer.
Thank you. There is a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion in a second. Is there discussion? Commissioner Young, I had seen your hand go up first.
Donovan, this is an area that has very, very challenging internet access. Does the city consider that cable or fiber or something else is part of what we considered required for utilities?
Not at this point. No, we consider that a, a private utility. And of course there's will be, you know, utility easements along the, the city streets. But besides that, we just provide the, the, you know, ability to accommodate them in the development.
And, and I didn't see anything in the engineer's comments regarding wells and well spacing. If the health department has challenges with that. And what are the consequences of us having approved this preliminary plan?
I'm not sure what the ramifications of that would be. I'm not sure what the ramifications of that would be. Um, if, you know, maybe some lots have to be combined. But I think that's something we'd address, um, prior to that final, um, submittal.
Commissioner Gerard, I had seen your hand go up next.
And this motion, you know, we need two motions tonight, one for the preliminary planned unit development and one for the preliminary plat. So is Dennis's motion for the first one with the six recommendations, which would be for the preliminary planned unit development, or the second one for the preliminary plat?
Commissioner, Commissioner Gerard, his motion was for only the first. For the second, we still need to hold a second public hearing.
Yeah.
We'll go through that item separately. Other questions from commissioners or, or other discussion? I, I have one question. Um, Donovan, the, and the mention I had earlier regarding the differential on parkland dedication. You, you had said that staff could look at that, um, and perhaps send that to parks, lakes and trails. Is your recommendation sufficient enough to allow that flexibility within the motion that exists?
Well, yeah, because basically all, um, well, I mean, it, it is, it's a, it's a city requirement. I mean, I can't, I can't, as a staff, I don't think that the planning commission can simply, um, you know, there's nothing in there that says that, that satisfies, that's been satisfied. I believe, I believe it has based on the, the, you know, written, the development agreement. But, you know, it, it doesn't, the recommendations don't specify, um, that those park dedication fees be required. Like many, many times you'll see that in, in staff recommendations. But I believe that, you know, that there's, there's, there's nothing in here that says that the, you know, the city is saying that, that they don't need to abide by the park dedication fee requirement.
All right. Thank you. Is there other discussion on the item? All right. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote on the preliminary planned unit development application for Stills Farm Second Edition?
Commissioner Young?
No.
Commissioner Batty?
Commissioner Batty, you're on mute.
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Chair Lengness?
Hi, motion carries. Um, John and Jaren, um, we will hang on because we're going to move on to the next item. We'll just leave you sit right there. If you could hang on to mute until I bring you up, we're, it'll go the same way we did in the last one. So we are at item number seven, preliminary plat application for Stills Farm Second Edition. This does contain a public hearing prior to consideration. Uh, Donovan, do you want to kick us off?
Certainly. Um, so this is for the thirty-five lot for till second edition, um, ma- major subdivision. Essentially, this is the motion to approve the number lots and the configuration that's presented, with that street layout with the two outlots that will be dedicated, um, in H O A owned, H O A maintained. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from planning commission.
Questions on the staff report, commissioners? Seeing none, um, we'll move into applicant additions. Um, John or Jaren, do you have anything to add on the, the second portion of your application here? I see heads shaking. No. So, um, commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant?
I do not, so.
Any questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we can move right into the public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing at eight fourteen on the preliminary plat application for Stills Farm Second Edition. Those that wish to speak to this item, please use the raise hand feature or make a notation in the chat so that we can bring you in one by one. Uh, Donovan, do we have anyone at city hall wishing to speak on this item?
No one is, no one is at city hall at this time.
Thank you. Karen, do we have anyone in the queue wishing to speak?
I do not have anyone.
All right, we'll give it thirty seconds and then I'll ask again and we'll close the public hearing if we don't have anyone. Donovan, have we had anyone walk in city hall?
No.
Thank you. Karen, have we had anyone raise their hand or indicate they wish to speak?
No one.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing at eight fifteen P M. and bring this back to commissioners for consideration. Commissioners, discussion or motion? Commissioner Gerard?
The motion to approve the preliminary plat application for Forest Hill Farms two, eighty thirteen point zero three, two point two, one point four, three point zero zero, zero four, with the condition that the applicant meet the approval conditions for the preliminary plat application.
Commissioner Gerard has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the item? Seeing none. Uh, Karen, can you please take a roll call of vote on item number seven, preliminary plat application for Stills Farm Second Edition?
Commissioner?
No.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Chair Lengness?
Hi, motion carries. We're moving on to item number eight, the zoning map amendment application for two-two-five-five-two Everton Avenue. This is in conjunction with item number nine, the preliminary planned unit development application, um, for the same address. It will, for those, I believe, most of our audience tonight is here for this item. Um, it will use a similar format that we used in the first. It is a, a two-part application process, both of which have public hearings. Um, so we'll start with the staff outline, go to commissioner comments. We'll bring up the applicant, commissioner questions of the applicant, and then we'll open the public hearing and then bring it back for consideration and discussion from commissioners. Donovan, do you want to get us kicked off, please?
Certainly. I'd like to present the zoning map amendment application for the property at two-two-five-five-two Everton Avenue. This is located on, on the west side of the interstate, um, on, of course, on Everton Avenue. It, um, is currently vacant. Um, is located just north of the Timber Ridge One apartment building. Um, this is the same owner proposing another apartment building for this, this property. But first comes the zoning map amendment in which, um, a high-density residential is, uh, zoning district in the multiple family district is proposed to be consistent with the future land use of, um, of, uh, highway, with, with, with the future land use that was, that's, um, of high-density residential, I'm sorry. And this is, um, so basically that this is a catch-up from the, the comprehensive plan. As you can see, the, the parcel here, it's zoned currently highway business. Um, the B two district is proposed to be multiple family. And the future land use plan does have this as high, high-density residential. And so that, that would then match with the, the multiple family. You know, zoning district and the, uh, of course, the proposal is, um, you know, actually brings us in line legally to have the, the comprehensive plan and the zoning, um, map consistent with one another. And the, uh, and this is similar to, um, what we saw with actually Timber Ridge One, where it was, you know, going to become the, uh, the high-density residential and it, it, and also there was a zoning map amendment to change that from commercial, um, to allow the construction of that building. And some of you may recall that the, the planning commission discussion, um, where properties along this part of Everton, um, were vacant. They were zoned commercial and really there was no, um, interest in that. Um, the exception being south of here where the self-storage unit, um, had been changing that high-density residential, zoning district, but then a commercial use, um, was proposed for that. And we had to go through the, the changes as well with the comp plan amendment, um, to make that, uh, commercial use back again. And so just in short, this is essentially to catch up with the, with the comp plan. And the staff, uh, recommendation is to, uh, a, a planning commission recommendation for city council approval of this change to, to changes to multiple family zoning district. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
Are there questions from commissioners on the staff report? Commissioner Young?
Donovan, during the, the last comp plan change, um, a really large amount of highway commercial was added to our, to our mix, um, not in this area. But could you help me understand why there was a strong need from the council to add a lot of highway commercial, but now we're going away from highway commercial?
Are you referring to the highway business future land use that's over in the southwest corner?
Yes, sir.
City. Yeah. So they're really kind of two, two different contexts here. That one was for a future job center. Um, you know, that was predicated upon interstate access.
I'm, I'm, I'm at the, along, um, on the very southern border, um, not on sixty-one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So it was all based on having, you know, interstate access, like basically hundred, one-hundred-eightieth street extending westward and connecting with thirty-five E. And then, of course, then, you know, doing a flyover to the thirty-five W as well. I mean, something that's a transportation improvement that I think, and I'll say is needed. But there was never any kind of agreement among our, our, you know, other jurisdictions. Columbus was okay with it, but Lionel Lakes, Hugo, um, they've all, for, you know, close to twenty years have imagined a hundred-seventieth being that connection to the interstate. So that was the whole reasoning behind that. Um, up here in this, this area, we had, I think, examined how there really wasn't, um, commercial interest in these. And of course, even in, you know, twenty eighteen, when, you know, a lot of these conversations were taking place, you could see that retail, you know, wasn't, um, having the same kind of, uh, you know, prominence, you know, or just even demand for that kind of land use. And so we looked at that and said, along Everton here, these properties probably have a use, and these are all, you know, heavily impacted by wetlands. So you don't have, um, large, you know, upland areas to, to have a, you know, large retailer with a large parking area. And so it seemed more appropriate to, to, uh, guide this land for high-density residential. And so this, this part, this piece was part of that, you know, was part of that thinking.
The second question I have is the same one that I've had a couple of times as we've looked at multi-unit buildings, and that is the mix of one room versus more than one room. We do not have very many two and three bedroom and almost no four bedroom, um, multi-unit buildings for families. And, um, this is something that we've, we've talked about several times. And this application is asking for a significantly different mix than our current zone requires. Could I have your thoughts on that, please?
Well, let's, let's, let's save that for the, the P U D application.
Okay. All right.
Other que- Other questions on the staff report? Commissioner Batty?
Donovan, just a thirty-thousand-foot view here on making things line up. Um, I mean, is this kind of going to be, be the way this happens here? Uh, going forward that we, um, you know, an application comes up and we, and then we make things line up so that it, it matches the new, you know, zoning and whatever it is. We need to make it line up with the, the, the new comp plan.
It's, it's, I, no, I would, I really, I'm committed to actually doing the comprehensive rezoning, both in that text, textual form as well as the map form. That's something I'm behind on. Um, so this is not my-
So that is going to happen though.
It is going to happen, yes.
Yeah, I'm not being critical. I was just curious.
I can't hear you, Eric.
I'm sorry. Was there other questions from commissioners? All right, Donovan, I'm going to ask you to explain the difference between item number eight and item number nine. I believe all my colleagues understand them, but for those in the audience so that they understand when we get to the public hearing, can you differentiate what a zoning map amendment is and what the preliminary planned unit development is?
Okay, um, so the, every ten years, the, the city of Forest Lake and a hundred-plus municipalities, counties, jurisdictions within this metro area have to update their comprehensive plans. And the comprehensive plan is a community plan. It's, it's, it's attempts to manage change, growth, um, and put it, you know, its best, you know, best vision forward for what, how they want to be in the community, in this case, in, in the year twenty forty. So there is a, is a public, you know, process to gather public input. There's also a, you know, task force among city leaders, uh, business owners, residents, the school district, uh, even a youth member. And working with a consultant as well, um, to kind of map out future land use for the area. In this case, like I mentioned, there was an attempt to create the, the twenty forty job center. In this case, it was something that was focused on having interstate access. So it could be like e-commerce warehouses, kind of things that relate to trucking, maybe. This is, you know, in areas that are far from currently where their homes and, but it would be a place where we could see there could be large, you know, large employers. Since if we look around the current job centers along, you know, the main commercial districts in, along Broadway, along Lake Street, they're pretty much, um, maxed out. Um, and of course redevelopment is occurring, will occur. But looking in a kind of a broader scale, something with really unfettered, unhindered, um, development potential. We look to, let's, let's look at this other area and, and zone this for future business. Right now there's trees there, there's corn, some chickens, cows. Um, but in twenty forty, what do we see there? So along this section of Everton, we said, you know, we think that, you know, hot, high-density residential will fit there. At the time, the, the Gateway Green apartment had been, that area had been zoned for that, those, those buildings, though they hadn't been built yet. And, uh, and it's, you know, this is along a collector road, you know, Everton, which of course is, um, that of course you may not know, but, um, is slated, is scheduled for reconstruction in, in, I believe it's next year, um, in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and, you know, so it'd be improved for greater capacity. Um, also it's in not too far distant from supportive services, you know, whether it's the, you know, the supermarket or the drugstore or the hairdresser, um, or the coffee shop. Um, and so this was, this area was seen as, you know, a good fit for that high-density residential. And so the comprehensive plan of this, this land, this long-range plan for the land use said, let's put this high-density residential here. What this zoning map amendment is, is making this, um, this property consistent with that future land use plan. And actually as a city, um, we're required to make that happen. It's just that we have not done that yet. And actually, as a city, we're required to make that happen. It's just that we have not done that yet. I have not done that. And that is something that it's, you know, I, you know, it, I I need to do it. I mean, I can't make any excuses that why it's not done, but and so basically, if if this, you know, individual applicant today was not making his application, the city would already have been doing this. So it's not something that hasn't been considered before. And in this case, we do have an idea of what was, you know, we have an idea of what the owner wants to put there. So it's a little different situation, but in in this case, if it wasn't this applicant doing it, the city would be rezoning this. And there would have been a process of notification, you know, and we will do this with all the other parcels where there's a big change. There would have been, you know, public hearings and review. So it wouldn't have been just, you know, recoloring the map. But in this case, it's it's private action and, you know, the application that is causing the action for this evening, you know, proposing this.
Thank you, Donovan. Are there other questions on the staff report? Seeing none. Karen, are you able to bring in the applicant so we can have them add anything that they wish?
Who's the applicant?
It's, can you bring in Mark Lambert, Kevin Chekel, and bring in Jamie Schertz as well, please?
So whichever whichever one of the three of you wishes to start, you're welcome to add anything on the zoning map amendment request. And then I'll open it up for commissioners to ask questions. I can
There you go.
Much better, Mark. Go ahead.
Perfect. All right, we'll get rid of those headsets. Mark Lambert, Summit Management. I've got the Timber Ridge Building to the south. And obviously, I am pleased to be before you tonight with this request. I'll save most of my comments for the PUD motion that follows. I've got a little presentation for you to kind of update you. What I would say is I do support the request for the map amendment. Obviously, as Donovan suggests, this is probably more of a procedural process. We have purchased the property. We do own it. We purchased it relying on the fact that the comp amendment did approve multifamily housing. And so we are supporting the request to make this multifamily. And to be fair, I I I beg Donovan to bring the motion from the city as opposed to me having to do it. So he he said he's just got so much on his plate that he welcomed us to bring the motion or the request for the map amendment. So here we are.
All right. Do do your partners have anything to add?
No, I think they're just they're monitoring tonight.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we will move into opening up the public hearing for the zoning map amendment application. The other piece will also have a second public hearing. So we will open up the public hearing at 8:33. And we'll start with those that are at City Hall. If you wish to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature or make a notation in chat that you wish to speak. Donovan, do we have anyone at the physical City Hall?
No.
Thank you. Karen, do we have anyone waiting in the queue?
I don't have anybody with their hands raised. Oh, wait, hold on.
I see one as as Rick Anderson. If you could, assuming it's it's you or whoever else is speaking at that, if you could please state your name and address prior and then go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Rick Anderson, address 22428 Edgerton, I mean, Evergreen Circle. And I guess Mr. Lambert's comment, it's almost seems like this is all for not tonight. It's more of an official rubber stamping that things are already in place. I mean, he purchased the property with the understanding the city was going to grant this change in the zoning. So I guess I'm kind of wondering. I was under the impression that this wasn't a done deal yet, but I kind of get the impression that it really is in what I'm hearing so far. And I I don't even know who to address it. But I would like somebody to give me some kind of response to that.
I I believe that Mr. Anderson, I believe that answer is what was explained when I had asked Donovan to explain the difference between the two. I I can let Donovan answer the technical piece and then if you want to expand on it further.
Well, basically, I mean, the zoning map says this is
I actually have a
I'm sorry?
Well, I guess I'm curious because again, Mr. Lambert purchased the property with the understanding that this zoning change was going to happen. So if that was the case, obviously, he's going to be extremely upset if the zoning change doesn't happen. And I don't, I'm not an attorney. I don't know if you would have legal recourse to go after the city for doing this, but, you know, it, I kind of got the impression this was a a meeting to determine whether this zoning change should happen. And to me, it's more of an official making it happen because it's already been decided to do so.
Well, I mean, Mr. Mr. Lambert has his opinions about, you know, and his intentions with the property as any any purchaser does and any proposer does. But the zoning map states this is highway commercial at the moment, and the process that's set forth in the zoning code is if it if there's a zoning map change required, there's zoning map amendment application. In that way, it's it's it is a deliberate act now for the planning commission to make a recommendation and then city council to follow up with a final decision. But it is also something of a established fact that the the comprehensive plan, it was adopted last April, you know, set this this land forth as as multiple family. So in some ways, I won't say it's preordained, but it's it's expected.
Okay, and maybe part of the issue is I'm a relatively new resident to this area. I mean, we just moved up here a couple of years ago. And, you know, my only comment would be to the commission and is, I understand you probably have had some discussions in this in the past, but I also know that comprehensive plans are made sometimes many, many years ago. And I think that in the future, when you're making planning zoning changes, that maybe we need to gather a little more community involvement because in talking to the some of the people that have lived in this community, we, there was no notifications that were coming out saying that these things were going to happen. And I I'm under the impression that there are notifications were made, but they were made based on a certain number of distance from the effect of change. I guess I look at it, I think maybe we need to look at an area as opposed to while we're within 500 feet or 1,000 feet. And, you know, that kind of change that's going to happen down in Everton down there is going to affect everybody that lives west of the freeway, south of, well, yeah, south of Menards all the way down to 19th. We're all affected by that. Whether you want to admit it or not, we are. So thank you for hearing me out on that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Commissioner Young, we are in the public hearing, so I'm going to try to refrain from having engagement back and forth from commissioner members. I will, I will note, Commissioner Anderson, the process for the comprehensive plan was approximately two years long, and I assure you that every member of this commission, the current council and the last two councils that had involvement in it, I think, were rather unified in seeking out community engagement. And in all honesty, we never get as much as we we wish for when it comes to those pieces. So it is, it is unfortunate, but it is incredibly important in the community. Karen, do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
I do not show anyone right now.
I see Sarah Enech or Enech, I may be mispronouncing her name.
Yep, her hand just went up on my screen, so.
Hi, it's Sarah Enech.
Apologize.
No, that's okay. 22609 Elston Court. And I was just curious, I'm just looking at the density of this area as it is right now. There's already three apartment units that were recently put into this small coordinate of Forest Lake. I I did some little math and was trying to figure out if we're incorporating 120 proposed units with the current apartments that we have, the current townhomes in this little section and the current single family homes, we're reaching over almost 572 units. This section of Forest Lake is one fifth of a square or 20% of a square mile. You put that into a density on average, four people per house, and you are upwards of over 11,000 people per square mile in this little section. It would be over 2,000 people just in this 128 acres. That's a lot of people for this little section. And I was just wondering if that volume, not just this one individual property was being looked at, but the whole Evergreen Circle, or not Evergreen Circle, but the Gateway Green and the whole Evergreen neighborhood was being considered, not just this, when rezoning this for the super high density. And to put it into perspective, too, if you look at the population density for other big cities, Minneapolis right now is per square mile only at seven or just over 7,000 people per square mile. Where again, this would put us at over 11,000 people per square mile if you multiplied it out. Chicago is reaching the same density as what this would be. LA is only at 88,000, what did I have? Just about 8,000 people per square mile. So when I'm just living here in this little section, I don't picture this section being that big.
Thank you, Sarah. Karen, do we have anyone else in the queue waiting to speak?
I'm not showing anyone right now. No. Yep.
I see Chris Larson with a hand up.
Hi, it's actually Sarah and Chris Larson. We live at 22622 Elston Court. Actually, you know, it it sounds like the comprehensive plan was really well thought out. It was a couple of years ago. And perhaps this this commission could reflect on if there was any consideration, knowing that we had gone forward with a lot of high density residential in this particular area of the organ of this city to maybe look at the land use for this this property, which if you look at it because of the significant wetlands was considered for any other options aside from highway residential and or high density such as a park or added opportunities for people to live in this area to take advantage of. I don't know, a dog park, you know, things along those lines. Again, probably a moot point, but just a curious question that if perhaps somebody could fill in a blank for me, that would be helpful.
And was was that Chris or was that Sarah?
It's Sarah Larson, and I'm I'm here with my husband, Chris.
And did Chris wish to speak as well?
No.
All right, thank you. Karen, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak for the public hearing?
Don't have any other hands up. Give it a second.
Donovan, do we have anyone that's walked into City Hall?
No.
I will give it another 45 seconds before we close the public hearing. Donovan, have we had anyone walking City Hall?
No.
Karen, do you see anyone that's indicated they wish to speak?
No one.
Neither do I. We will close the public hearing for item number eight, the zoning map amendment application at 8:44 PM and bring it back to the commission for discussion and or consideration. Commissioners? I don't see any hands go up. I I will note a few things that I I did hear in the public hearing on this item, and I have had significant conversation with with people on this project. And the next item, and I don't want to talk too much about the next item, but they're so intertwined, it's hard to. So I'll give some leeway here on this conversation. The the volume of people in the area, I think, is a note that I heard from numerous people, including in the public hearing tonight. And I think that we're actually able to address much of that in the next agenda item versus this particular item. The question on whether there should be a park in that area or not, I will go back to the comprehensive planning process in where we have long-term planned parks. That particular neighborhood and area has a park roughly a block south of where the residents that have the backyards up to this project. And another park is not designated on south of Broadway and west of the freeway. I believe there is another one scheduled or listed on the comp plan north of Broadway and west of the freeway. But having another park that close isn't something that even I would have supported during the comp plan process in all honesty, because we have areas of our city where there's people that are literally miles from parks in areas nearly as dense as the single family neighborhood back there. And I I think the focus needs to be there and having having planned parks when developments come in as we do south of the airport. So the zoning map amendment application here, I'm going to support this tonight and and voice most of my concerns on item number nine. I think that the process we had in the comprehensive plan and the task force and those that chose to be involved in that set in motion. And I I don't know that we, as a city, really have a choice here. I I think we for the most part, have to approve the zoning map amendment change in this particular instance. Commissioners, other discussion? Commissioner Young?
We worked very, very hard to try and get not only task force members, but the broader community. And there were several open houses where where we asked folks to draw out where would you like parks, where would you like multi-unit, where would you like single family development businesses, where do you think that there should be more commercial notes? And and I realize that it's it's a challenge when you're living your life to keep up with what's happening in your city. But the city does try very hard, in addition to specific letters, like within 300 feet of of a property change, does try to to have information online, does try to have information in our newspaper of record. I I know we worked really hard to try and get people to comment. The this this intersection would not be good for a park because of the not only roads that are there now, but the plans for significant improvements and widening and 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 additional traffic flow on Everton. And I I'm not a fan of putting putting parks in that sort of situation. North of Broadway, we've got what I call the Dragon Park with the the dragon sculpture. We've we've got the park that's under the water tower that will see significant enhancement for for fields and and large plays. So I this is not the the place for it. However, from a long-term planning perspective, it does make sense to have the density, this particular multi-unit here. When you, when you look at, and I'm very familiar with 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 Minneapolis, if you look at a 7,000 people per square mile in Minneapolis, please realize that that particular square mile and 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 density includes all of their lakes, includes their parks every six blocks. Includes all of their lakes, includes their parks every six blocks. And 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 if you were to look at the density of Forest Lake. Not just in this area, but of of the entire, we are well, well, well below. The eleven thousand, so comparing it to a Chicago or Minneapolis, while I I realize it, it feels feels that way. Those density calculations include the lakes and and parks. So, Mr. Chair, with your permission. I am going to move. That we approve the zoning map amendment. That is. That is part of our our comprehensive plan for multi-unit development.
You do not need my permission to make a motion. I've heard your motion. Commissioner Betty has seconded it. Is there discussion on the motion? Commissioner Keen?
Yeah, I, you know, with the lack of interest in commercials. Businesses in this area because of the wetlands. And I I I think it's a very well-laid-out plan for for that location.
And Commissioner Young?
Mr. Chair, the the. The motion to be in accordance with the the. The zone with the comprehensive plan also includes the findings of fact as listed in the staff report.
You were on the same page as me. I was actually trying to find that in there. It's on page thirty-one for fellow commissioners that wish to to review that.
Yes.
Are there discussion on the item? Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Betty?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner. Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
And Chair Langness?
Aye, we're moving on to item number, or motion carries. We're moving on to item number nine. Preliminary planned unit development application two-two-five-five-two Everton Avenue, known as the Timber Ridge Apartments Two. This does contain a public hearing prior to commissioners considering the application. We will go through the same process we have been, so I won't explain it again. I think everybody knows. Donovan, can you please kick us off?
Certainly. I like. Chair members of planning commission like to present the. Pl- preliminary planned unit development application for the property at two-two-five-five-two Everton Avenue. This proposal here is for two multifamily buildings totally totaling a hundred and twenty units. With associated parking and other site improvements. Of course, this, you know. These apartment buildings are are permitted use within the multiple-family zoning district. And so, you know, this application. Is dependent upon the planning commission, I'm sorry, the city council approval of that zoning map amendment, which was the subject of the previous agenda item. But it is consistent with, you know, in this, in the, in this review, we're applying those standard, multiple-family. Zoning district standards, presuming that that. Will be the case that it will, it will be a, you know, zoned as a multiple family. Though that final decision does rest with city council. The. In this case, because two buildings are proposed, zoning code requires that. That this, this, the build, the two buildings go through the. The P plan unit development review on this eighteen-point-six acre site that's that's currently vacant. And developed. There are extensive. Wetlands on the property. I'd like to show you a little bit here. Approximately, I I estimated about two-thirds of the the property are wetlands, and a wetland deletion has been approved. And is shown on the site plans. And so there's three basic upland areas, the one close to Everton, if you drive by, there's kind of an oak savanna here. This area on this upper northwest side, and then this other area that that the applicant, Mr. Lambert, likes to call Butterfly Island. I think that's from a. Previous owner had called it that. And the site plan as it's as it's laid out. With with that primary access from Everton Avenue, a single access. And. My PDF here is going very slowly. But the. The buildings themselves, you can see here just quickly, do do plan to be resemble. The Timber Ridge One building with similar amenities. And. Coming up to the site plan. And what is? So you can see here. How the two buildings are set. Meeting the the twenty-foot structure setback from the the wetland line. And the parking configuration, which is the mixture of of surface parking and the white. Boxes you see are enclosed parking, they're detached garages. I believe it's seventy-two enclosed spaces and. This initial plan had a hundred and eighty-seven. And these include. You know, many on this, you know, this rear parking area. And the, there's a few things in play here. One is that. During the neighborhood meeting, the the Mr. Summit Management, the project team. Received feedback on the location of of this storage shed and. Mr. Lambert has been working with residents, you know. Incorporate some of their feedback, working with this engineer to move that shed. Also, what we have is that the planned reconstruction of Everton does involve some widening of this of the road. The plan that was in the the your planning commission packets. Doesn't reflect some of the later conversations with the that county project team and Mr. Lambert. And so, you know, I'm presenting what we have here, what what you approved, what, you know, the fire chief took a look at, with the city engineer took a look at. But I don't want to get too deeply into these because Mr. Lambert. Has newer plans to to to. For the for planning commission consideration. And so I'll just, you know, briefly say that. You know, there, you know, I do have. Some concerns about the the unit mix. And the, you know, zoning code allows no more than twenty percent of one-bedroom units. And we've, as a, as a, as a body, the planning commission, you know, has been looking at this within this PUD context. You know, with some flexibility and. And that, I believe that began with that, a former, another building. That Mr. Lambert built in twenty-seventeen, Arbor Ridge, which had about forty-four percent one-bedroom units. Then the Timber Ridge One building directly south here has about fifty-three percent one-bedroom units. And then looking at Lighthouse Loss, Encore, the two Gateway Green apartment buildings. Those are around in that that forty percent range. What's proposed here for both studio and one-bedroom units is. Is, I calculated sixty-two percent, so it's it's a bit of a deviation. I mean, that's something for the planning commission to consider. Part of that. You know, actually, the the greater number of units here. And if they were larger units, there'd be fewer in these buildings, does impact the parking, the the amount of parking. That's required by by code. And I think that's a consideration. There's a lot here on the site. And it does meet. Many of the, is consistent with the spirit of ma- much of the code. But that's, I'd like to, you know, as part of the planning commission discussion, you know, look at that. Also, part of the code is is that there's a. Standard that the. Parking be within two hundred feet of the main entrance of the building. You can see there is, you know, a much la- larger dimension to to some of these. Rear parking spots than the two hundred. I believe Mr. Lambert has a figure to address that and has radius to show you those. And of course, there's, you know, there is a trade-off here. With, you know, this impacts wetlands less. This application will, you know, most likely involve some wetland replacement application with the DNR. Because wetlands are, do extend across this area, kind of a causeway to that rear parking area. But. You know, parking spaces put closer to the to the these entrances would result in more. More wetland impacts, assuming, you know, of course, the same units, number of units are are built. But the, with this initial plan, it didn't, you know, the fire chief. You know, did review it based on the large truck, the Bronto truck, the turning radius, and this this does work. There are. You know, in the trash enclosure is a little bit above, it's four and eight square feet proposed. And that can be approved through the beauty process if it's over four hundred square feet. The the light plan that submitted meets code as far as pole heights and maximum illumination levels. At the property lines, you know, at the right-of-way line. I do have concerns about the the landscaping plan. And again, this is one, I believe, that Mr. Lambert will have another one to show you, but. Yeah, there is. And. You know, concerns I have for it relate to. You know, the lack of trees at the perimeter of the parking areas. And but in some of the, some of the screening of the stored area as well, storage shed. I'm the up in the upper northwest corner. I do support the the, you know, the the crab trees that are proposed along here, along which. During the the Everton Avenue reconstruction, we expect to see a ten-foot wide by two minutes trail on this west side of Everton. And so the, you know, these trees will provide good screening, good separation, not really screening, but buffering. From, you know, pedestrians in the in the parking area. As well as, you know, it's really nice, robust amount of foundation plantings. Around around each individual building. The, there's not been a watershed district application submitted, I believe. Mark Lambert wants to, you know, work through the site plan issues here and then. Do that. Do that stormwater submittal. Of course, any any proof, city approval is contingent upon. Meeting Comfort Lake Forest Lake watershed district requirements. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held and, you know, residents did express concerns about that storage shed. You know, as it's seen here, they reviewed this, the plan that you're looking at. Just the how it extracted their view. You know, they they were concerned about tree removal, so some tree removal would would have them. See the Menards to the north. More easily. And some concern about the density. Though, of course, this property, you know, was zoned highway commercial. For for a number of years. In fact, Danny Hecker, the car dealer, used to own it. Prior to the most recent owner. Who actually owns the manufacturing plant across the street. And so there was going to be some higher density. It was. Development in one form or the other, you know. Potentially for this property for a number of years. And so what we're seeing is is, you know, the the first proposal really for that, for that higher, more intense development. The the PUDs flexib- PUD flexibilities that are sought, let me say, did I get all the? It's also the. Residents, you know, were concerned about, you know, asking about questions about management. Impacts to their properties. And that sort of thing. The. PUD. Flexibility sought relate to. The, sorry. The, you know, having parking more than two hundred feet from the main entrances. Having less than. Hundred and twenty, less than the number of. Apartments, you know, having enclosed parking spaces. Seventy-two is proposed and the code would require a hundred and twenty. And this is, of course, is what this about Mr. Lambert filed in, and there's two other buildings. The. The application also requests a wall sign of up to thirty-two square feet for each building. And I believe that, you know, we've, and we've done the largest, you know, building. Wall. Sign for another apartment building, given the kind of distance from from the Everton and the the large. You know, kind of the scale of the project. I believe that, you know, one one sign of up to thirty-two square feet. You know, it does does appear reasonable. These, these application did request two monument signs, or I think one is reasonable, given the isolation of this. This development from others. On the other side of the street, it's all commercial. So if you're looking for a Timber Ridge apartment building. You know, it's pretty clear that, you know, it's going to be, pretty much identified by its by its. Size and being really nothing around it, I mean, the area is completely surrounded by wetlands, so I believe that, you know, the code is. That allows one monument sign is 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 appropriate here, to be applied here. And. It's consistent with past planning commission approvals. I do believe that the requested. Building height of about fifty feet is reasonable. And that should be recommended for granting as part of the PUD. And then also the the manufactured stone. You know, for an exterior building material, does meet the intent of the code to have, you know. You know, high-quality design for a multifamily building. And the application does request. To have, you know, not have overstory trees as perimeter trees for the. The parking lot perimeters. Also, I do believe that's a reasonable accommodation, given the constrained site. And so. There's, you know. The. Some of the flexibilities, I mean, just in summary, some of the flexibilities, I believe, are reasonable. Some I believe that, you know, should be subject of more planning commission discussion. And then. For the PUD review criteria, I won't go go through that verbatim. But essentially. There is, you know, some of the concerns around the intense use of the site as well as. But, you know, overall, I'm supporting that, you know, the, you know, the the PUD, some of the, many of the standards that. Where their flexibility is being sought. He isn't, you know, in this case, the applicant is, you know, using, being creative with the use of the site. And. Also, I should also conclude or. Also include the. The, you know, the apartment unit mix, the sixty-two percent one-bedroom or studio apartment. Units is one of those PUD flexibilities there sought. And. That, like to have some planning commission discussion on that one as well as. But the minimum apartment size, it has, there are. You know, ten units that are below the the minimum six hundred square feet, and those are the studios, and they're five hundred and seventy and five hundred and sixty-one square feet in size, and that that. 561 square feet in size. That, that seems to me reasonable. A reasonable combination. You know, there's, you know, I think there's a reason we've seen the higher ratio of one bedroom units because household sizes are getting smaller, you know, in general. And it appears that's what the market is, is, uh, you know, telling apartment builders to do. And that's noted in applicant's narrative as well, market study that was shown. In your, um, in your packets, there is, um, the, I did include the road section and I'll kind of that the, that the, the, the county has been considering with this, and this is not something else as well that, Mr. Lambert will, um, I think have an update on. But, you know, this is their full typical section and we're going to focus on just on the western side. So imagine this is the center of the road. This existing right of ways 33 feet. And what in their, in their large, you know, cookbook, as a city engineer would say, approach to the road section, it's, it's, it's large. They're actually start off with a 75 foot this side of the center line dimension. They've, you know, they've come down from that. However, at this point, uh, you know, there's, there hasn't been a clear kind of right of way line established. And that is, you know, that's a concern for this review because we're looking to basically set everything from that right of way, whether it's the, you know, the parking setback, you know, including landscaping, that sort of thing. We want to make sure that's all accommodated. And that's something I feel strongly about is that we, that we do make sure that there's that, for instance, those crab trees that are, they're buffering. The, um, you know, buffering the, uh, the trail from, from the parking for the apartment building. So at this point, the staff recommendation is, is to table this application until more information is obtained on, the, you know, the, uh, you know, where that right of way line is so that we can do complete site planning and, and also have a plan that is fully vetted by, you know, the city engineer as, as well as another review by the, by the fire chief to make sure his largest truck can navigate up to the front of the buildings. And with that, I'm happy to take in questions from.
So Donovan, um, for clarity, I'll call in yet in a second, Commissioner Young, for clarity, your recommendation is to table, however, I suspect you're still seeking feedback both from the public and a public hearing tonight. Back to the applicant from commissioners and having that discussion before such a motion would exist.
Correct. Um, yeah, I can explain it a little further. Thank you for noting that. So, Mr. Lambert has been engaged with conversations with the county project team for months. When, you know, and he and I have been corresponding, looking at concepts through 2020, I think even in the 2019. So when I learned that the road was going to be reconstructed and that always, you know, means some changes and so many safety improvements, capacity improvements. I, I did, you know, facilitate that communication with Mark and the, and the project team. And it wasn't until a meeting with county staff, the third week of December, after I had noticed this for a public hearing, after Mr. Lambert had, had submitted this, this site plan, that we learned that, you know, they had different ideas about the right of way. They really announced what ideas. I mean, they hadn't communicated that to city staff and obviously not to Mr. Lambert. And that, you know, I don't, you know, there are many times when, you know, we feel sorry for developers, but this is one of those times when I have sympathy for his situation because it's just unfortunate that, you know, they hadn't communicated to him really what their expectations were. Where you could plan for that prior to that, so that, you know, we can get, you know, provide a more complete site plan for the planning commission. But also it's just, it's a matter of timing that, you know, when Mr. Lambert, you know, took control of the property, you know, in the, in the, in the, you know, this county has been thinking about this re, reconstruction for years. Well, the two things just kind of happened to coincide. Some ways it's fortunate because, you know, any sort of expansion of the road, you know, can be accommodated, we can, they can work, they can, there'd be some collaboration rather than, you know, kind of removal of site improvements of landscaping and that sort of thing. If, if, you know, there was an expansion that is required. So, so what I think it is useful though, for the planning commission and for, you know, the residents to provide some feedback now. For Mr. Mr. Lambert to come forth with a plan that, you know, incorporates feedback or, you know, addresses concerns or he, you know, has, you know, some other proposals to put before, to, to try, you know, attempt to mitigate some of these impacts. And so it, you know, it, but I would say that if, you know, if we hadn't noticed the public hearing, I would have probably said, let's, let's delay this, this review. But anyways, we're here and and I think it's, it's, it's an opportunity for all of us to have a conversation on what will work best for the site.
Thank you. I guess one more opportunity for the public to engage in the process too. So, thank you. Commissioner Young, all right, we'll go to commissioner questions on the staff report and I saw Commissioner Young's hand up first.
Donovan, the, um, the applicant is asking for a lot. And typically, if you want stuff from the city, there needs to be a benefit to the city. What, what is that benefit of the, that the city will receive in return for the really significant asks on the part of the developer?
Well, I mean, in one set, in one sense, the, the code does say that the PUD application is required. And that's, and I did have some conversations with Mark on what, what public benefit, you know, could there be, you know, it's first building, we had that, that, uh, you know, exercise, outdoor exercise area, which I don't think, you know, was a great success. I'm glad it's there. I mean, it is, you know, can be used. But the, uh, you know, I think the public benefit is, of course, there is additional housing, you know, more housing choice for the city. I mean, there's things that relate to, you know, any apartment building, I think, provide that some benefit. But I think I'll leave it up to Mr. Lambert to speak more about that.
Are there other questions on the staff report from commissioners? Seeing nine, Mark Lampert, if you want to unmute yourself and add any presentation and perhaps answer Commissioner Young's question as well to start off.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Will I be able to share my screen? Do I have that option?
Yeah.
Staff can provide it for you. You should be able to click on the bottom, share screen.
All right. And let's try this. Testing one, two. Oh, hang on, email popped up. Oh my gosh, sorry. Uh, all right, there you go. You know, the one thing is we're all getting good at Zoom and sharing, correct? Are you able to see this? Did this come out the right size or is this?
We're, we're able to see your screen. If you can hit the arrows on the right and left side of the PDF and yep, click that arrow and that one.
That one helping me? It's fighting me. Let me, gosh, I wish I.
Yeah, click.
There you go. Just wants to be slow, I guess, huh?
This is why you have children to teach you.
Boy, no kidding. Who, uh, who just went off to college, by the way. So I have lots of time. There you go. Okay. Hey, that took a little bit.
That works, that works a lot better. Thank you.
Yeah, commissioners, Mark Lambert, Summit Management. Bear with me as I kind of struggle through some of the graphics, but I wanted to present them to you and give you a little update tonight. Thank you for taking your time. I have maybe about 10 minutes worth of updates for you. As Donovan suggested, we had quite a curve ball thrown at us the second week of December after we submitted the PUD. So some of the corrections that you're going to see tonight or changes you're going to see are a little bit of a moving target. And I guess my, my first reaction was not to, not to present them tonight. But I guess I'd like to present them so that you can kind of see the progress that we have, see that we're listening to the neighborhood to, uh, to answer the questions of what benefit is here and, and, and know that we're going to kind of table tonight, go back, listen to what we heard additionally from the commissioners tonight, come back and try to do something amazing. I take great pride in these buildings. We, uh, we design them through a good architecture firm. We worked to find good builders. We build them and we continue to hold them. I am very, very proud tonight to be sharing this with you because I think this will be a tremendous addition to the city of Forest Lake's housing stock. And more importantly, I think it's going to create a synergy for the existing Timber Ridge building and frankly, the neighborhood that's, uh, that's in place. I, I'm sharing with you this screen. This is one that I asked my engineer to put together just to give you a sense of perspective. Because when you look at it, you think, well, wow, this is just a, a big chunk of property on, a bigger chunk of property. From a scale point of view, we have an 18 acre site here. The challenge that we have is about eight of that is, is kind of high and dry. 10 of that is wetlands, which we need to do our darndest to avoid. But I would also suggest to you that it's those 10 acres that are special. And it's those 10 acres that really make this an opportunity for us to create a wow. We own Timber Ridge one, if you will. And those units that face the north that look out onto this wetland structure are just absolutely beautiful units. The units facing south have good views too, but the units are north are beautiful. So as we acquired this 18 acre site and we started to try to site plan, we said, boy, if we can find a way to take advantage of the views of these wetlands, we're going to have some dynamic units here. The challenge that we immediately faced, as you can probably see, is that, you know, at the end of the day, you've got a, about a seven acre, six acre piece of high ground here. You've got a little connection, you've got a two acre piece. And then you've got Butterfly Island was the name that the gentleman affectionately called it. And then our Timber Ridge apartment building is down here. One of the neat opportunities that I saw when I looked at this first was the ability to connect these two buildings to make a little bit of a, kind of a pedestrian way. If you notice on this Google map, there's a little white strip here. That's actually a dock section that the original owner had installed to his butterfly island where he was trying to foster butterflies and will continue to do that. And then we hope to continue that same pedestrian walkway down into Timber Ridge. So one of our immediate benefits is just some circuit, circuitry between the two buildings as we continue to develop those. The other slide that I'm going to try to share, and again, please bear with me because I am not a teenager, is one that I want you to hopefully get a sense. Let's see here, PDF. You know, this worked so well when I was practicing, friends. Oh gosh. Is it going to give me that one? I'm going to share the same one again. Yeah, well, darn it. Okay, here we go. Sorry, files. Oh gosh. Select a window. Okay. I am not getting anywhere close to what I'd hoped to see here on these screens. I'm sorry, guys. I had my PDFs loaded in Adobe and I am not seeing Adobe for whatever reason. So, um, well, let me, um, let me.
Is it one you sent over today?
Um, I was gonna, Donovan, I was gonna show them the 42 foot ask from the county and kind of explain that. Is there a chance you have that one?
Let me, let me, let me see if I can pull that up. Yeah, I do have it somewhere.
Uh, I, well, here I do as well. Let's see if you bear with me one second. Donovan, I called the email curve ball.
Oh, really?
Uh, that was the email that I had had. Let's see if it's, uh, if it's here. I'm sorry, people. Had a good use of time. Where access plan, gosh. Combined exhibit updated. Well, now I'm not getting it far enough. Well, let, let, let's, um, let's do this. Let's stay on task. I guess.
I can do the.
You find it Donovan?
Yeah, I got it.
Perfect. Can you pull it up for us?
Yeah. So it's the two, two tone one, yellow, the.
Yes, sir. Yep. And again, commissioners, please bear with me. I'll, I'll do my best to kind of help move this along. So the number one issue that we've, we've got to talk about is this county discussion. I, I truly had a huge curve ball from Washington County. And again, I'm not, I'm not, uh, going to do anything but, but resolve it, but essentially we've got a long way down in our site plan. And at the very last moment, uh, we received a, I think an email or maybe a call from Washington County saying, gosh, we'd like to have 42 feet of your frontage. And, uh, and then the way we want to do that is we want you to dedicate that as right of way. And, um, meaning that you can't touch anything in that right of way. And then you can go ahead and figure out what's left of your site after that. And if you take a look at that, you can see basically that 42 feet ate up all of our parking along Everton, took half our drive lane from the garages and, and left us really in a very tough spot. Uh, I went back to the county and, and had a, a meeting with the county, a Zoom meeting where we offered the yellow strip as an easement. So that's an 18.45 foot easement, which means that our right of way line stays the same and that our easement agreement would be a collaborative agreement whereby we would try to continue to have our landscaping alongside the trail and complementing the trail, but that the county would, instead of taking the property as I think they had planned to do via condemnation, we would gift them the easement and coordinate our access in that area. They did send an email back acknowledging the 18.45. We are still working on the landscaping issue to try to resolve that. They were bristling at the idea that we would share landscaping. So Donovan and I have a little more work to do with respect to how the landscaping is going to come to be in that front area. With that said, um, I, I think that we have made significant progress. The thing I would tell you that is nice about this Everton rebuild is that they do plan on really doing it right. There'll be a center lane. There'll be a right turn lane. And so any concerns about additional traffic or the ability for Everton to handle the additional traffic, you know, frankly, will be resolved, I believe, with this Everton rebuild that's planned. But that obviously for us had been a huge curve ball. When Donovan wrote the report recommending tabling, we had not had an agreement from the county on the 18.45 feet. So I, I am happy to announce tonight that we have an agreement. They've agreed to the easement. We have a little more work to do on landscaping. But, um, I, I, I think the major curve ball that we had been tossed has been resolved. So, with that, I guess I'll, I'll just kind of touch on a couple of other points for you. And I'm going to try to do this, get share screen again. Let's see if I can. Seems like it wants me to open it. So maybe I'll try opening these first. If I can do this. I've got a couple of things I wanted to mention the unit count for just a second because I know that that's obviously a concern. Share screen. Tell me I got my unit count. Oh, look at there and let's share that. So I, I think if I went through Donovan's report and I kind of heard, you know, the big issues that we want to try to at least address. I, I do want to respond to the unit mix because I hadn't had the opportunity to do that before. Timber Ridge one and Timber Ridge two frankly will be very, very similar buildings. Our intent is to operate and manage them very similar. As we looked at trying to balance and create units in these new buildings, we were very sensitive to what we had built and we were also very sensitive to what the market was, was calling for. So what you're seeing with Timber Ridge is, um, there's been some comments about how the one bedrooms are so much more. To be fair, the one bedrooms are exactly the same in Timber Ridge one as Timber Ridge two. The differences are that we've added a studio, which didn't exist in our existing Timber Ridge or Arbor Ridge property. So we thought it would be nice, the market. So we thought it would be nice, the market, uh, seemed to call for a smaller unit, uh, a more affordable type unit. And so we've added 20 of those to this mix. Those came out of the two bedroom calculation. So yes, our two bedroom numbers did call back. We did though, to address the unit size issue, add eight three bedroom units. And so, um, I think when you kind of look at that as a whole and you say, gee, does that seem unfair? I hope you, uh, will ultimately conclude it does not because what we've done is really add two new unit types at the expense of one unit type. We've added studios. We've added three bedrooms which didn't exist before at the expense of the two bedrooms. The one bedrooms have been consistent. So, um, it's a little unfair to, I think lumped the one bedrooms and studios together in the same bucket. It, it is a little bit different product mix if, if you understand where I'm coming from with that. The next thing I wanted to try to show you was just a quick update and Commissioner Langus, Langus, am I doing okay on time? Are you okay to have me walk through this?
Yep. Keep, you, you're welcome to keep going.
Perfect. Okay. I'm going to do my level best to find, um, a couple of things here. I think. Must be this one. Try that. That doesn't look quite right. Okay, now we're back to the operator. Let's see here. Sorry, guys. I wound up getting in a view screen that, that maximized this. So I'm simply trying to zoom back to regular actual size. Quite give me there. One more minute. Okay, there we go. All right. Now I'm going to try to share this one again. Hopefully this works. There you are. Are you guys able to see the, uh, screen I have up?
We are able to see it.
Perfect. A couple of things I'd, I'd like to walk through with you kind of on a site plan basis. And maybe on kind of an enhancement, uh, basis that I, I think will ultimately come into some of the testimony tonight from the neighbors. But I think we'll also, um, share with you the fact that we're listening. In, in a couple of orders, um, it's a little harder to see. And so I would welcome you to maybe look at this when you see this again in the future. But one of Donovan's concerns, uh, a- among his ma- many concerns was the distance of the parking to the doorway. So if you look, you can see our first circle there being 200 feet from that door. What we've done to try to help accommodate that is we actually added another main entry to the back end of the building, which will allow us to get closer to that 200 foot distance. If we do that, we have approximately 40 out of our, uh, 200 stalls that would be outside of the 200 foot. I would again, you know, ask you to consider how challenging this site would be because if you think about it, we've taken a rather quirky looking unsquare site and managed to find a couple of buildings that, uh, contorted to fit the site. And then we've worked very hard to try to deal with kind of our lost, uh, two acre site up to the northwest. One of the conclusions that we've reached within the last few days, week is that without very much more fill, uh, replacement fill, uh, we are able to park, uh, across what we've been calling this crossing. And by doing that, we've been able to locate the parking closer to the apartment building, uh, as Donovan raised his concern. And more importantly, and you, you heard from both Dave and Sarah tonight and Chris and Sarah Larson. Both of those two neighbors live right here and back up to me. So obviously they're very concerned with what we're doing. I met them out at the site personally. Um, our initial shed plan had it being located 35 feet from the site. Currently we have that site located on this drawing at, uh, 165 feet away from the property line. And there's a little asterix that I'll explain in a minute. But basically our intent has been to pull the parking back down towards the site. Uh, increase our impact slightly, but more importantly, decrease our impacts for our neighbors. So right now with what's shown, we're at 165 foot away from our neighbors, which I think they'll find a whole lot more accommodating than 130 or the 35 feet that we originally had had on the property. Um, just a couple of other, uh, quick comments, uh, for you. Um, we have went ahead and, well, let me scroll down here. At least it scrolls quickly. That's good news. I'm, I'm going to head to the landscaping plan. There you go. Um, one of the things that we've done now is kind of left that area that we're just describing up by the neighbors, uh, native. And, um, the other thing Donovan, and this is going to be new for you tonight too, is, until we resolve this, what can we plant in the easement area? Uh, I guess my suggestion tonight was maybe some form of arborvitae's. I know apple trees were still a good choice. Um, what's at stake planning commission members is if we can't agree with the county on this 18.45, we are going to lose another 13 parking stalls along Everton. And I don't want to lose another 13 parking stalls. We've already given up, uh, close to, uh, 17 parking stalls along Everton. But if we are forced to do that, um, I have been working on the plan, which would, um, basically allow us to substitute those stalls again, a little more remotely uh, up in this northwest corner. So ultimately I'm showing this as a proof of parking to the neighborhood and to the city council that my first plan is to plant trees within that 18 foot easement that the county has agreed to accept. Uh, I believe they will ultimately, uh, allow us to do that. And this would be the, uh, site plan I would ask you to approve. If for some reason the county does not allow us to, uh, approve the, uh, 18.5 and we need to plant where I have that perpendicular parking. Um, we now have a plan to relocate those 13 stalls here. I, the drawback is it would take our setback from 162 foot from the neighbors to still 100 foot. So still a good setback. But, uh, obviously I'm sure they would prefer and I would prefer the 162 foot, uh, setback. The, um, last thing and I, I guess I'll let you guys, uh, back to the, the public meeting. But the last thing I'd like to share with you is, um, we did, uh, have the opportunity to ta- hear some comments from the neighbors. Sorry. Get you back here. Okay, now it's not doing. Well, let's see if I'll come up here. Okay, am I still sharing that?
I see a diagram of a shed.
Of a shed, yes. So one of the concerns that, uh, the Yanks and the Larsons had was at 35 feet, they felt that the building was too tall and that they would, you know, really be looking at the back of a blank building. And so after meeting with Chris, uh, Inc. and Dave, uh, they suggested some windows and, uh, some additional dressing up of the building. And so, uh, when we submit our updated packet to you to review it at the next, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, you'll be able to take a deeper dive on this. But, uh, again, just kind of checking boxes. I know that that was a concern at the neighborhood meeting. And I want the neighbors to know that I heard them and that we are pulling back from the property line and we are, uh, addressing up the building. The, um, last couple of points that I would just share with you is a couple that Donovan had raised. Uh, he had suggested on the wall signage and the monument signage that we drop to one each. Uh, a wall sign on the south building and a monument sign in the north building. And I, I think that's a reasonable request and I accept that. Uh, he indicated that our building materials are going to be slightly different in color. Um, I had actually had hoped to do them all one, but he had mentioned that, uh, the idea is to have a couple of color palettes. So I'm certainly willing to do that. So, uh, I, I think, uh, what I'd like you to take away tonight is, um, there are a lot of moving parts to this. Uh, and I think that we have, uh, as Commissioner Young mentioned, uh, a lot of things here. But I think that we are, uh, working through, uh, what is a difficult building, but what I think is going to be a terrific building for Forest Lake. Uh, I would again say the benefits are the great housing. Uh, I know that property taxes are never, uh, that big of a concern to, uh, uh, planning commission members. But I can tell you that, uh, uh, we certainly are paying our fair share of, uh, property taxes on our, our two existing buildings. And hopefully the city sees, uh, some advantage to being able to have additional funds to help with, with their other needs and demands. So for all of those reasons, I guess I'd, uh, maybe ask that, uh, you give me a chance to follow up, uh, if there are any other questions. But, uh, I, I, I think I, I really want to show you that we're headed in the right direction.
All right. Um, thank you, Mr. Lampert. Um, I, I will ask the first question. And then we'll open it up to commissioners for questions of the applicant. What is the timeline? You expect to have everything arranged with the county? And those documents submitted to the city to come back to this commission? Assuming it's, assuming it's tabled tonight at some point.
Well, let me turn it around. Do you guys meet monthly or are you meeting every two weeks?
We meet every two weeks.
Perfect. Um, I, I guess I'd have to defer to Donovan to be able to say that. This, the county has sent us an email that says, we'll take the 18.5, four or five foot easement. But Mark, you have to be out of there with landscaping. So, uh, I would expect that within another week, I could negotiate with the county to see if I need to be out of there altogether. If I am, uh, barring some other help, um, we'll relocate those 13 spots to the northwest and be able to come back with a, a solid site plan.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there questions of the applicant? Commissioner Keen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really impressed with that new, the new, uh, sketches and drawings. I like, I, I actually had that on my list is that back parking lot in the southwest, where that'd be the northwest. The second half of it, if you could have angled it up at an angle and put the shed there, it, it's nice. Uh, the new drawings, uh, the, the trees on the south side of that building. I'm just impressed with the whole new layout of it. It's very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Gerard?
Um, you know, I, I like the overall design. Um, I, I think that the drawings to lay out tonight in relation to your original building kind of lines it up and helps us out on how, at least helps me on how far away we are from the residence. My, my question is, has to do with the density. You know, we have this 20% for one bedrooms. And, and maybe Donovan can answer this first. I don't even know studios where they sit in the equation and, and apartments. It just seems that we continue to creep higher and higher with the smaller units. I appreciate the three bedrooms. They're, they're nice, but I would, I would like to see, you know, studios kind of remind me of, um, being down on, in Uptown versus Forest Lake. But I'm just trying to get an understanding of, of why we have to keep bumping it up. I understand it's financially probably better for you, but I, I would like to see a little less density in these buildings.
Was, was there a question in there, Commissioner Gerard?
Only to Donovan about if we have anything, uh, on our, efficiency apartments.
Yeah. So the, the, the code that, the piece of code that refers to the, this minimum 20% just mentions one bedrooms. I, but I believe the spear of the code does include studios. I mean, I think the intent is not to have, um, you know, a preponderance of one bedroom units. I mean, that's what the code says. And I don't know the exact reasons for that. You know, but you do look at the average household size of Forest Lake and somewhere around 2.4, um, persons per household. So maybe there's more attempted to kind of match the demographics, you know, local demographics with these buildings.
Thank you.
Um, I saw Commissioner Batty's hand up while Commissioner Gerard's was, and then I'll call on you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Batty?
I'm, you know, I realize this is a challenging site from the standpoint of wetlands here and stuff like that. I, I'm just curious. Have you tried to climb the, Mark, have you tried to climb the mountain here of wetland mitigation and maybe shifting? I mean, this, if, if it seems to me that if ever there was a site where you had at least reasonable potential to shift, you know, to shift well, and I know you, you can't, it isn't, can't do it on a one-on-one basis, but I'm just wondering if you looked at that at all as, uh, as a way to maybe, you know, get, you know, the space that you need for the parking for the number of units that you want to build.
Commissioner Batty, I, I'm still on mute currently.
You're fine.
We can hear you.
Uh, Commissioner Batty, um, the, um, the, the short answer is I, I, I've, uh, become very fearful of wetland boundaries. Uh, the, uh, wetland law is pretty clear that, uh, we, uh, you know, need to do our best to, uh, you know, avoid, uh, it all, um, possible. I, I, I'm a little hesitant even about my application with the crossing, uh, and the additional, uh, parking there. But I think it tells a story. Uh, I guess for us, for me to go back into the site and try to square the site out with some fill, uh, I'm, I'm very hesitant that they would come back and maybe ask me the very question that we have here is, well, how about we just run it across the crossing and use the two acres we have in Highland? So, uh, frankly, I, I, I think there may have been a day years ago where that was the possibility to kind of square it off and do it. But I think with the wetland, uh, requirements as they are today, I, 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 I'd worry that I'd, I'd, I'd spend a lot of time trying to chase that and, and, and end up back here with, with probably an identical plan to what I have for you tonight.
So, but you have a wetland delineation and you know what the class of the wetlands is and everything and already.
But, but believe it or not, with, with what we've got here, we're looking at less than 7,500 square feet of, of fill. So that's barely, uh, 0.2 acres, uh, of fill. So I, I'm very proud of our team. I think we've, uh, been able to frankly dance around, uh, a, a lot of, uh, a, a lot of wetland perimeter uh, and still, uh, and still impact not very much.
Okay. I, I, it was just a thought.
Fair question. Thank you.
Commissioner Young. Commissioner Young, you're on mute.
Okay, that should be better. Okay. Uh, I have a real problem with the, the apartment unit mix. Everything that I am seeing from, from builders, um, and, and looking at regional numbers, people are moving away from these studios and one bedrooms. Because even after we are no longer in the pandemic, it makes sense for businesses to allow as many of their employees to work remotely as possible. It cuts down on their, on their building expenses. So I, I, I have a real, I'm not sure that I, I'm following the market issue. We, you have set the tone and, and you were a leader and, and convincing the city to accept more and more, um, single bedroom units. Um, but we are, we are getting more and more and a much higher dearth of two and three bedroom units for families. And if we are looking at it, something that is affordable for a family, it's not always a house, but a two or three bedroom apartment would work. Quite frankly, if you were to change your mix so that you had, I love the three bedrooms, but you had fewer one bedroom and studio, you would take care of part of your parking problem, um, which I've heard a lot about the parking issues, but, um, I think that if you were to change your mix a little bit, I really cannot support the mix that you have right now, um, and in, in any way, shape or form. If some of your one bedrooms at say a 40%, maybe 44%, um, one bedroom, would be one bedroom and studio, um, I can support that those studios would be a smaller size. But this is, this is much too high, uh, with the dearth of two and three bedroom. Because of the distance to parking, um, that makes covered parking even more critical. There is nothing like trying to carry a little hot water, um, 200 feet out to unfreeze your doors in the winter time. This planning commission has heard over and over and over again that, uh, in, in Forest Lake, you just can't have a house that doesn't have enough parking, uh, have enough garage space. And the lack of covered parking is a serious issue to me. Especially with the, um, distance that folks are going to have to go. especially with the distance that folks are going to have to go from either your front door or your back door. As you rework this, I don't consider that that your your trees, especially toward the back of the parking area, I think that that you have the ability to put some higher overstory trees in that parking area. I think that that would greatly enhance this. And I'm I'll look forward to your next landscaping plan. But again, I am not hearing the benefit to the community, except for little tiny apartments, that the your requests for your 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 PUD and your variances would engender. I can live with the monument sign stuff. I can I can live with going with the engineered stone, although I think it's going to be a maintenance challenge for you in the future. But but I really do not see what the city is getting in return for very significant variances. And so as you as you think about this, and as you're doing some reworking, as you're trying to deal with with perhaps losing more parking, I really would like to see some changes in the in the apartment mix. I don't think that there's a response needed, since we are going to table tonight, but that this is a consideration that that I would ask you to think about.
Are there other questions of the applicant commissioners? I will, I have a couple, Mark, who's much like Commissioner Young outlined, your asks are, I think there are three pages in our in our packet, and I would say very, very extensive. And I I have one that I believe supported both of your previous projects. And when I look at a PUD, and I tend to be one that supports flexibility and allowing things to happen when it's a greater good for the developer, when it's a greater good for the neighboring properties, the community as a whole, and it doesn't put complexities in for the city on future maintenance and those types of things. In this project, and I'm listening so close to try to hear, how is this beneficial to the city and the neighbors? And the only thing I heard from from you in its benefit is the gain of property taxes. And I want to share with you a little piece of data that I have. And it was from a city study done not that long ago. And it stated that when we have a residential property, for every dollar that's paid in tax, they consume a dollar twenty five in city services. When we have a business property, for every dollar they pay in tax, they consume about a quarter in city services. Now, there's certainly exceptions, and there's probably people that might argue apartments are even worse off than that. So I will never look at this as a property tax gain for the city. In fact, I look at it as a net loss. That doesn't mean I don't support apartment buildings, because I've supported almost every complex we put in Forest Lake in the last five years. Where is the benefit here? Is that is the trail in the loop to the island publicly accessible by the nearby neighborhood and others? Is there is there some feature that I'm missing? And maybe Commissioner Young is missing as well on where where the city and where the neighbors are gaining here from what otherwise would be built if it followed the strict construct of our codes?
Sure. Let me respond to that. Well, obviously, I guess the the beneficial the beneficial issue, I believe, is still the quality of the buildings that we're creating for the residents. I'm very happy with our building at Timber Ridge. If you permit me to do this, we'll be building a very nice building for your residents here. One of the issues that we fight on this unit mix, which I think kind of goes to Commissioner Young's issue as well, is is trying to find a balance. And I'll take a look at it again. I was proud that I had three or eight three bedroom units in there. I thought I thought we were moving in the right direction. So I'll take another look and see what we can do with that. What I would suggest to you, though, is I'm truly, truly responding to the market. We have two buildings, and we have lots and lots of calls on the smaller unit sizes and the studios we didn't have. And so, and I'm being very sincere with this, I think the studios are a way for us to to deal with the affordability issue. Either, you know, units need to be lower priced, or units are going to be, you know, similarly priced but smaller. And so by adding these studios, I do think it's a benefit to the community, because I think I'm creating something akin to maybe a little more approachable units for you. So I guess Commissioner Langness, you know, what are the benefits to using the PUD? Well, I think I got here because I have two buildings on a very, very difficult site, and I think we've done well to contort to fit in those. Once we concluded two buildings, I think we're in the PUD track. And so I think as Donovan, I looked at it, you know, it wasn't a public health park. We realized the trail is going to cross in front of us. We're contributing land to that trail, and we'll be part of of that overall development. But I guess I would tell you, I think we've got a great building product. I'm excited for the connectivity. It's not a it's not a public trail, because frankly, it's a couple of dock systems that that the previous owner had installed. So I don't think they'd quite qualify for the ADA standard that that's needed for public parks. But I still think that we're going to have one hundred and twenty residents who are going to be greatly benefited by the quality of the housing that we're going to put up here.
And and that's and that's possibly where where we may differ. I don't necessarily I believe that the the housing you'll put up will be of great value to those that you rent to. I don't doubt that. They're going to have beautiful views of wetlands. But when we put up what is essentially a metal shed in the wetlands view of our neighboring single family residential, I'm not seeing the benefit. And quite frankly, I like even things like that. Like, I look at that shed, and I'm just like, that would be hideous. If that was put in my backyard, which has woods and wetlands, thankfully, that can't be developed, and I know that, I would be pissed if one of my neighbors tried putting that in the backyard. And and I look at that, and I would stand on the side of if you're going to put up a shed, even if it's a maintenance building, we can call it what we want, but it looks like a shed today. I think it should have very, very similar structure design to that of your tenants' buildings with the exterior building materials of of stone, or, you know, possibly an exception to match the building design so that we're in a similar construct. And what they have to look at isn't any different than what your own residents have to look at across the parking lot to your other building. The the parking lot that that juts way out and exceeds that two hundred limit, quite frankly, I don't know how I get to the point of saying that that's anywhere reasonable for a few reasons. One, I think it's just ridiculous to have a parking lot that looks like that. And that, quite frankly, might limit you to one apartment complex that on that property, which solves your parking issue, which solves almost everything on that list with relative ease. And, you know, we don't have to build on every single upland piece of property in our city. And I know when we went through the comprehensive plan, and I was very active in that, we looked at areas where we had density versus lower density, or where we had business versus a single family residential. And we very specifically looked at natural buffers. And there is a very natural buffer between that area. And you're essentially overlapping that natural buffer. And I get why you're doing it. It's more financially beneficial to you. But I'm not seeing how that benefits the bigger picture. And yes, I understand that you have to go through the PUD process because you have two buildings. And I get that. But the commission or the city council does not need to grant the extensive list of flexibilities you've asked for. And we allow flexibilities in the PUD so that we can have a compromise. And we can say, here's what we're going to offer so that you do this better, and it's better for everybody in the whole. But a lot of these flexibilities I'm seeing, it benefits you as the owner and the developer, and it's not benefiting the neighboring properties or the city as a whole. And so that's what I'm begging you for, is to tell me, how is this going to benefit the neighbors? Or how is this going to benefit the city as a whole?
Thank you, Commissioner Langness. I guess that's where we differ, is frankly, I disagree. And and if the call to me tonight is to stand here and to try to come up with some esoteric comments about how this is better, I think this is the same kind of issue that you run into in any development. I listened to the eighty ninety unit development that's up for discussion before me. How does that make your city look better? It's taking trees down. It's moving dirt. And yet, people need homes, and yet, people need houses. So I guess, to be fair, I think we do differ. And I'm willing to stand here and say, I think this is an addition to the city of Forest Lake. I've done two other buildings. I'm willing to listen to commissioners' comments. But if the objective here is that I'm not supposed to build a building, I don't know that I'm following the direction of this discussion.
I'm not suggesting you don't build a building. For the record, I'm simply looking for where's the benefit. And if there isn't one, I'll move on to Commissioner Young's question.
Well, I think there is, but I think we just disagree as to what it is.
Commissioner Young?
I would expect no less than, Mr. Lambert, you would come in and build a quality building. Forest Lake expects no less than quality buildings as our minimum. That is our minimum expectation. And so when we when we were talking about the previous development, there are public mile long trails that are going to be built as part of that and access to the nineteen acre park. So and quite frankly, the asks were considerably less. The commission historically has tried to be very, very accommodating to to developers, whether of single family, of of commercial buildings, of apartment buildings. And I understand the desire to push the envelope a little bit. But again, we would expect no less than a quality building there. So to say that that the benefit to the city is a quality building, I don't see that. And that's part of the PUD process is for extraordinary requests, there should be some, at least a little more than ordinary benefits. And and I'm just going to, in the interest of time and folks, that I'll look forward to the next iteration.
And to be fair, Donovan and I did discuss this, and I had offered at some point to consider another little health park like we had done at Arbor Ridge, if that's the the ask. But I think we both came away with the feeling that that maybe wasn't as beneficial. It's still there, and it's going to be there. It's 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 nice amenity, and it looks good. I guess I would go back to saying, as a developer, I look to try to find places where multifamily belongs. And so if you look at this site, and I think you guys agree with this, you know, we have a good corridor, a good public corridor. We're relatively buffered from the neighbors. We're nearby the multiple businesses to the north of us. We have good access to those. We'll have trail access to those. So as we look at kind of the benefits of the building, the benefits of the location, I think it's there. I guess I'm a little at a loss as to what you're asking. If you're asking for payment of money, if you're asking for me to do something that's not in your code, I understand that PUD asks for flexibilities. I took what's a very, very difficult site, and I think found a decent site plan. So I'm a little bit at a loss to say, gee, there's no public benefit here, when I guess I think there is a public benefit. And I guess if ultimately Planning Commission says there's no public benefit, then deny me and send me on my way. But but I think we've worked very hard, both with staff who supports this, and and with us to try to show the city that we've got a nice project here. So I guess I'm a little lost as to Commissioner Langness' ask of me to say, what's the benefit? You know, I guess, I think it's the same benefit as your as your previous development. We're going to provide good housing to the city of Forest Lake. And if there's specific requests, I'm certainly happy to look at them. But I'm not, I'm a real, I've done a lot of public meetings and planning commissions, city councils. And frankly, this is the first time I've had somebody kind of come back to me and say, well, what's the benefit of your building? So I guess I think it's a great building. I think it's a good location. I think we're a good management company. I think we run a good building. And if there's something more, I'm certainly willing to address that. But I I guess I'm just at a little loss as to what I've done wrong here.
We're not asking for the benefit of your building. What we're saying is, you're asking for an extraordinarily large number of variances. So perhaps it would be beneficial to have fewer variance requests from our code. In other words, think about a building that perhaps has the monument signs you're asking for, perhaps has the some differentiation on covered parking, goes a little farther than twenty percent, a maximum of twenty percent, single and and studio combined. And not build as large a project so that you are within our or close to our existing code requirements.
The challenge we have is the site, obviously. It's a very difficult site. So while it seems like there's a number of flexibility, some of which I've acknowledged Donovan's request for fair, the signage, for example, the overhead trees, Commissioner Young. So perhaps what we should do is maybe do the public hearing and make see if there is anybody that has some additional comments. And let us go back and let us try to, you know, address some of the concerns. And at the end of the day, I guess it's a balancing of what you feel is is fair. And I think that as a developer, my job is to try to find a good site, which I have, that will accommodate a nice building or two, which I have, and do the best to work around, unfortunately, to Commissioner Batty's point, very, very difficult wetlands. And so trying to respect that and still respect the Planning Commission is not an easy task.
And, Mr. Lambert, so I'll give a I'll give a couple of examples on on two of the items that you're asking for flexibility on. On wall signage size, you're asking for more than three times the size for a wall signage. And your wall signage, I would presume, is going to face Everton, because it's the only thing that makes sense. We have business properties across the street. So your wall signage sign is not going to be disruptive to neighbors. It's one of those flexibilities that I go, this doesn't have a negative impact. When I look at the apartment mix, for reasons stated previously, as well as it adding the complexities of more parking on the property, which exceeds that two hundred foot limit, which then puts this parking lot in a very awkward place in the middle of wetlands, and what is otherwise a very nice view of neighboring properties, that greatly impacts their properties. And so what I'm looking for on that is, how are you going to differentiate and mitigate so that we allow you to build the apartments at more than three times the variance of our city requirement, in the sense of the percentage of efficiencies in one bedroom units, in more than twice the distance on some of the parking spaces? What is the net benefit that outweighs the negatives that are going to come with that? That's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for the city to get paid for anything. That doesn't help the neighbors. When I look at the city impact stuff, I'm looking at things that would otherwise hurt the city negatively down the road. I quite frankly, don't see a lot of that. I see more of how this Quite frankly, don't see a lot of that. I see more of how this is not as beneficial to a number of neighboring properties. So I'll leave it at that. Are there other questions of commissioners for the applicant? Commissioner Batty.
Have you, have you take, have you done any soil exploration work at all on the site?
We have.
Do you have water table issues here?
We, we do. And, and maybe that was one of the concerns. We did look at underground parking and we do have a high water table there, which quickly eliminated that option for us.
Okay.
There are other questions from commissioners of the applicant? Seeing none, we can move into opening the public hearing. We'll open it at ten, ten PM. We'll use the same process we did before. Donovan, do we have anyone at City Hall?
No.
If anyone else in the chat wishes to speak to the public hearing, please make a notation in chat or raise your hand. Karen, I believe we have Aaron.
Yeah, he should be on.
Geppert, Aaron, if you want to state your name and address for the record, and then go ahead and add any comments you wish for the public hearing. Aaron, we're not hearing you. I don't see you unmute on our end.
No.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Go ahead, Aaron, if you could say your name and address for the record first.
My name is Aaron Geppert. I live at two, two, six, one, zero, Elston Court. So I guess I just had, I guess, two points of concern or contention about the, the development. The first would be just on the, I'm, I'm not too familiar with the expansion of what's happening on Everton Avenue. But has there, are, are there contingencies on handling the intersection of West Broadway and Everton Avenue on the development of this property?
I believe the answer is no, but Donovan, do you want to clarify?
I'm not sure what you mean by, I mean, they, they do plan intersection change, intersection change, particularly with the Menards entrance, you know, access off of that west side of Everton. And actually, I should mention this earlier. On next Tuesday, January nineteenth, the, the preliminary design alternatives are going to be presented to the city council by that, the county engineering staff project and project team. So I encourage anyone to watch that. It's, it'll be on the City of Forest Lake YouTube channel. So there is some twenty alternatives that they've, they, they're considering at the moment. Essentially, what they do include is a center turn lane, as Mr. Lambert mentioned, you know, two, you know, through lanes as well as right, right turn lanes. You know, where required. And one of them would be, you know, right turn lane into this, this driveway for the, for the proposed building. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it does. So yeah, my, my concern with that obviously is there's a lot of traffic that goes through that area right now, as I think most people know. In high traffic times, it can be very daunting to, to travel that. And if the, this development does go in, I was just wondering if, if there was actually any any verbiage or anything in the stipulation of approving this construction that it can only go through if that, that occurs. Because if, if that doesn't occur, for whatever reason, the, the city or whatever has to back out of that construction. It could vary negatively to impact the residents in this area. So that's just one of the, the concerns I had. Also, the, I don't know if there's any adjustments being thought about to the, the exit or entrance of the Evergreen Ridge neighborhood. You know, it's a four, it's a two-way stop right now. With the added traffic that we might see. I'm not sure if there's been any impact studies on what might have to be done, if anything, to that intersection.
I'll, I'll state that the alternatives right now being considered don't have a, like a light or a roundabout, you know, at that intersection. Obviously, there'll be the center turn lanes, the right turn lanes, some configuration of that. But right now, the, there aren't the traffic counts that would warrant some sort of traffic control, you know, that, that big sort of change. And the main thing is that, you know, Everton obviously is pretty busy, but the nineteenth street just doesn't have the numbers. And that's just kind of a basic, you know, traffic planning, you know, transportation planning piece of it. But, uh, you know, but definitely there'll be an improvement there.
Okay. So yeah, the other, the other point I wanted to make is about, well, what's been discussed about the maintenance shed on the north, was it the northwest end of the property? And the parking lot that's proposed. Yeah, the, the initial plans that we saw were definitely very concerning. Just on how close the building was to the neighbor's property. My particular property doesn't actually get too much impacted by the presence of that building visually. But it's still a concern for neighbors. And obviously I want to, to speak up on that matter if it, it impacts them. So moving it back would definitely help. But we're still losing all those trees. So the, the, just the visual presence of that building is a, a large concern. I just wanted to note that. And also the, I mean, the use of it, it's a large building. I imagine it's going to be a tractor or something going in there for snow removal. Tractor starting up at, you know, three AM or whatever and running for thirty minutes is definitely going to negatively impact the neighbors and myself. And it's not something I look forward to myself, just hearing a tractor start up throughout the winter and then having to listen to that. So moving it further away is great. Moving it closer to those buildings somehow, it looks like a tight lot, but any redesign, I guess, on that front would definitely help. The current plans for any trees going in, they don't really seem to create much of a barrier. They're not making a wall or anything. You can see through those type of trees, even fully grown, we're going to be able to see the, the top of the building. So I would suggest i- if that is the case and the building does remain in some fashion, some greater barrier is put in place, some larger trees that make more of a wall than just kind of angled off and, you know, staggered formation. And I, I didn't see on the new plan on how, if there were any trees put up along the parking lot that's on the back end. But I would think that would likely be concerned for residents further to the south is if they're looking at their backyards, are they just looking at a parking lot with lamp posts? It's definitely not an ideal view that I would want. I suddenly find on my end. So that would be another concern. But that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Geppert. Karen, who did we have up next in the queue?
Um, I moved, I thought it was Rick Anderson, but maybe not. There's nobody else. Everybody's been moved in.
Rick Anderson, go ahead. Yeah, I see you're unmuted.
Yeah, Rick Anderson, two, two, four, two, eight, every circle. I guess I, my comments, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the questions that the commissioners have given Mr. Lambert. I do, I, I agree with the commissioners that I don't find the benefit for this community by him building a building. Mr. Lam, I do have a question for Mr. Lambert. And I'm wondering if he's even looked at the feasibility of just building one building in there. I know it's a financial decision you're making to pay for the land that you bought. And you're, you're in this to bank money and, and make some income down the road. But if you can get by with one building, I think it's much more palatable to us in the community because we are looking at the impact we have. We are a tight little community with not a lot of egress getting in and out. And to throw in another few hundred cars and people coming in and out, even with the improvements that are going to be made on Everton, I don't really see that they're going to really help that much as far as just the volume of traffic. When I leave to my home, ninety-nine percent of the time I'm heading into town or getting on the freeway. So while nineteenth is a very nice relief sometime if I'm getting south on sixty-one, most of the traffic is going north, right by that building. And it's going to pass to get through them and Art's interchange and that whole mess over there. So by just adding another few hundred cars, I think you really have some issues with what's going on there. That's my questions for today.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Karen, did we have anyone else up in the queue?
I don't see anyone else. Nope.
Also, I'm sorry, Chair, I do have some written comments that I would like to read at the appropriate time.
Thank, thank you. Do you want to? Do you want to go ahead and read the, the letters that you got? And then if we have somebody else raise their hand while you're doing that, we'll keep the public hearing open.
Certainly. I will note that, I didn't do it before, that in your, in your packets, there was a letter from Menards. And they note that as a commercial use that's already pre-existing that they, they would like the future owners and tenants of the property to understand they live in close proximity to an existing commercial district. So it's, it's just more of a kind of information letter from them. From residents, I received two emails that were not in your packet. Like to read those now. Greetings. Why does the city feel they have to continue to build apartments so close to other high density housing? What is going to be done about the increase in traffic on Everton? Additional lanes do not address the congestion near Everton in West Broadway. Parking also needs to be addressed better than they did at Timber Ridge One. When there is a snowstorm, nineteenth becomes almost impassable for several days due to people parking on nineteenth because they can't get into lot or can't do, can't do, or can't do to plowing. Has anything changed regarding management of the facility since they, they will be using the same one as Timber Ridge One? We are hearing from the residents that there has been a high turnover rate of people in the office causing confusion and frustration over getting issues dealt with. On the last web event on this topic, the building representative praised his management company. And as contradictory to what, to what the residents of that building are saying is the actual case. Do not have any specific, I do not have specific examples. That's, that's the first letter.
Can, can you state, because we're in public record, the name of the person?
Rick. And the second letter is addressed City of Forest Lake Planning Commission. I'm writing about the proposed rezoning and accompanying apartment unit development at, of two, two, five, five, two Everton Avenue North. As a resident of Forest Lake, I encourage responsible growth. However, I and others in the Evergreen Ridge neighborhood are overwhelmingly opposed to high density residential development on the plot under review. City growth should conform to and enhance the areas in which it is occurring whenever possible. So I truly hope you are thinking of the future and the current residents. Several issues that have brought to light through social engagement with concerned residents include, number one, adjacent property impacts. Placement of the proposed maintenance build proposes both a visual nuisance and audible nuisance. Keeping as many trees and green space as possible. Adding walking paths to prevent residents having to walk on the residential roads in the neighborhood that currently have no sidewalks. Ensuring parking will be thoroughly considered as an issue with the current, as, as it is an issue with the current Timber Ridge apartments during snow removal. Underground parking, for instance, would show a considerable commitment to growth with minimal impact to the existing habitat. Burden on infrastructure, both at the entrance to the Evergreen Ridge neighborhood and the intersection of West Broadway Avenue and Everton Avenue North. Thank you so much for your consideration and service to Forest Lake. Sincerely, Holly.
Was that it, Donovan?
Yes.
All right. Karen, do we have anyone else that raised their hand or requested to speak as part of the public hearing?
I do not have anyone else. Nope, I don't.
Raise your hand or put a comment in if you wish to. Donovan, have we had anyone? We'll, we'll give it another thirty seconds. Donovan, do we have anyone at City Hall?
No.
Okay. I'll wait thirty seconds and then we'll close the public hearing if we have no one else. Commissioner Gerard, I see your hand. Are you wishing to speak in the public hearing? Otherwise, we'll bring it back to the commissioners right after.
I was going to fill your thirty seconds, but I can wait.
Okay. All right, Donovan, have we had anyone walk in City Hall?
No.
And Karen, no one's raised their hand, right?
No one.
We'll close the public hearing at ten, twenty-five PM and bring it back to commissioners. Commissioner Gerard, did you want to start?
I, I just want to make a, there's been a lot of discussion on Everton Avenue tonight. And as Donovan mentioned earlier, Tuesday, the city council is going to get a overview by Washington County. This is a county road, so they're doing all the work on it with some input from the city. That's very important for the local residents to understand. Second, if you want to get a preview of it, if you just Google Washington County Everton Avenue project, it pops right up. It's got a video. It's got all kinds of information. I really think that, you know, it'll explain a lot more than we would be able to. And I strongly encourage attending Tuesday night if you're in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Gerard. I, I agree with that advice. Other commissioners discussion? I can add a few things in here. One of the, the pieces that I don't have concerns about in this project, and I understand why neighboring residents do have the concern about traffic, and honestly, I don't. That, that road, when it's redesigned, is going to fix to some degree, the biggest mess, which is Menards on Everton. And I, I think that and the rest of what they do in there will accommodate whether this is a business property or a couple of apartments. I think you could put a relatively high use and on a county road with the turn lanes and the whist they're looking at should, should be pretty easily accommodated, isn't it? I have a ton of concerns when I look through the ass in here. And, you know, I, I think some of them may be mitigated. When I look at like the landscaping plan, so if, if you're going to have, you know, parking that goes way beyond the building in a maintenance shed, I would expect extensive more landscaping to cover that net negative appearance that you otherwise would make look really nice if it's right next to your apartment building. But I would look for it to be extensively better elsewhere as perhaps an offset. I'm trying to offer Mr. Lampard some ideas here. When, when I look at the percentage that our zoning code requires for efficiencies in one bedroom units, we, as a city, through our comprehensive plan, invested a lot of staff time and a lot of active members of our communities' time and quite frankly, paid a consultant to put stuff together that got us to that number. And if you believe that the market would not support three bedroom apartments here or two bedroom apartments here, I'd love to see the market study that says that that's not possible here. And, you know, that, that may help me overcome that. But I think that having the, I think if you brought that sixty-two percent down much, much closer to the twenty percent in our requirement, I think you start to reduce your parking issue. And the amount of parking that has to be so distant, and I think it minimizes a lot of the other pieces. So honestly, I think that's just a better pathway for the project as a whole. With the, the county road pushing over and potentially losing even more closer spots. You know, I, I, I really think this property is much better suited for one building design. I'm not going to tell you that it has to be one building, but I, I think it's better suited for it. The the minimum apartment size, our code says six hundred and I believe it's like I believe it's like 10 of your units are less than that. That is one of those things that if you came much closer to that 20%, I can probably forgive that because it's not all that extensive of a piece. And and I would look at the big picture. The the wall signage on the building, I think, assuming that your designs later on in the process had it facing towards the street Everton, which I presume is what you're going to plan on doing. That would be one that I would see as it doesn't have a net negative. The two monument signs, I think you agreed with the staff response, and so I won't comment on it because I don't think it'll come back on the final. The storage shed, I I think you're asking for a five foot height variance on it. And if I I I first would really push the standards of the short sheds appearance, particularly seeing how it's not immediately adjacent to where your own residents will see it, would be much better suited in very similar building materials and some architectural design standards that you would want in your own backyard. The exterior building materials piece, I I don't have a a strong preference on that particular one. The trash enclosure, I don't have a strong particular one on it, as long as the the trash enclosure matches the building standards well, and it's not just a wooden fence that's going to fall apart in a couple years. So those are the big, the big ones as I go down your list. I think your ask is a ton, and I I I I can sense your frustration with me in in even saying what is the city gaining from it and the neighborhood gaining from it? But I I think this is a huge net loss for the neighborhood in a lot of what the ass are in the variance pieces. And so if if the plan came relatively close to what it is, there's no way I would support it. And I'll just be very honest, and I would rather tell you that early on in the process, that I think that's a huge stretch and probably any one of those things I might be able to overlook, but it's the conglomerate of all of them. Other commissioners on discussion here? Commissioner Keen?
Uh, the the signage on the side of the building, is that just the going to be the numbers? Is there going to have the the monument down by the street? So I I just want to clarify that part, or is there going to be verbiage on the building?
Go go ahead, Mr. Lampard.
Thank you, Commissioner Langus. The short answer is, we were just struggling with two buildings and the requirement for one sign. At the end of the day, I think Donovan's suggestion of one monument on the north side of the property, because we do have about 600 feet here from one end to the other, the monument sign on the one side seemed reasonable. We don't have a good spot for monument sign on the south side. So Donovan thought maybe the wall sign, I think the current permitted wall sign is is I don't know if it's 12 feet or 18 feet, two by six, two by seven, but we were frankly hoping to replicate that monument sign on the building absolutely facing the commercial district there. So that that's where the concession, or at least agreement with Donovan suggesting that we just do one wall sign on the south building, one monument sign on the north.
So the the wall sign on the building will sort of mirror the monument sign out by the street.
Correct.
And then my last thing is, I had on my notes here, and I discussed it last time, what you do is I spice up that shed, the pole barn, whatever, windows, a cupola, the siding colors, the roof colors. Make it, if you could make it look like the apartment building, you know, with the stone age and stuff, I would really I think the neighbors would would appreciate that too a lot more.
True.
And that's it for me.
Thank you.
I I have one more comment. I was looking back on my notes. At the end of the parking lot in front of the shed, there isn't, what I can visualize, an easy way for a car to turn around. And so if that parking lot was full, there isn't an easy way to back in and out. And so I would like to see that on the final piece, as well as specifically have the the fire chief look at is there an issue with getting a truck down there? I I understand why he looked at the other buildings, but he may or may not have looked at the distance he would have to back up a truck off that parking lot. And so I think those are relatively small things, but need to be looked at. Other commissioner discussion? Commissioner Keen?
Yeah, when when you move that parking lot on from the northwest corner closer to the apartment buildings, your first proposal had a bridge in there. Now, are you talking about filling that in? Or having the parking lot like on top of the bridge?
No, I'm not sure where the bridge concept came from. We've always been filling to go across that area.
Oh, I thought it was going to, I thought it was going to be an area where the where the wetlands went underneath.
Uh, no, we've we've always talked about filling, so I'm not sure where it came from. So.
Other discussion? Or a motion? Commissioner Young?
I move that we table this until the applicant brings back our the next version.
Commissioner Young has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gerard has seconded it. A motion to table is non-debatable. Karen, can you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Chair Langus?
Aye, motion carries. So thank you, Mr. Lampard, for joining us. For those that are watching, the what what happened is the planning commission has tabled this, which means we've set it aside to have it come back to us later at a point in time when the rest of the documents are provided. The planning commission, once they table something, can't further discuss it. So there won't be any further discussion on this item tonight, but follow the city website and you will see when it pops back up on the planning commission's agenda. We are moving on to item.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. We are moving on to item number 10, other business. And we have Councilmember Munson joining us tonight because Councilmember Gerard is no longer a council member and liaison to us. He's joined us on our commission. And so Kelly Munson was appointed to to join this team. So Kelly, do you have any updates for us?
I don't have any updates. I've been saying that I'm excited to be a part of this group. Excited to learn the processes and be with Commissioner Gerard again. And then the only other thing I would add is just kind of reiterate what Commissioner Gerard said about. It'll be next Tuesday night, the workshop around the Washington County project in Everton Avenue. For those that are interested.
Are there any? Thank, thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners for our council liaison? Seeing none, thank you. Donovan, do you have any updates for us?
I will say that we do not have agenda for the fourth week of the month, Plan Commission meeting, but we do have an agenda for February 10. And small updates, we do finally, this is, you know, pulling back a little bit of history, but we do have a two council reviews for the Headwars 123 Comp Plan Amendment in February. That one's still in 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 review period. Had to tinker a lot with the spreadsheets for those future land use, you know, housing units. And then also just submitted the Smith Property Comp Plan Amendment that 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 you all reviewed, I think it was October, which had to follow the first one to make sure that the numbers I was using were stable, assuming that that February reviews do result in approval for the Headwars 123. So with that, I'm happy to take a question from the Plan Commission.
Commissioners, any questions? I don't see any. Karen, do you have any updates for us?
Uh, thank you, Chair Langus. I do not have any updates.
Any questions for Karen? Sounds good. Commissioner Batty?
So next at the next Planning Commission meeting, which is going to be the what, the first the second Tuesday and or second Wednesday in February, there will be an election of
Go ahead, Commissioner Batty.
Chairman and 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 or vice chairman.
That that would be correct. So my term ends at the end of January here, and I know there's there's some rumor that I resigned. That's actually not the case. I simply said that I'm not seeking reappointment. So I I thought there wasn't a second meeting in January and something coming up on that agenda, but I just learned that this will be my last meeting. So you will have an election at the the next meeting. And if you can't figure that out, then I suppose it defaults to Commissioner Young. She's the vice chair right now. So she can start the meeting and hold the election, and then whoever you guys decide. Did you have any other updates, Commissioner Batty?
Nope.
All right, Commissioner Keen?
Well, thank you, Eric, or Commissioner Langus, for your chairmanship when you took over from Commissioner Gerard. You did an excellent job, I think, and good luck with whatever your your future holds for you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Brink, do you have any updates?
Thing for me, but I do echo those same sentiments. We'll miss you around here.
Thank you, Commissioner Brink. Commissioner Gerard?
First, it's a it's a pleasure to be back on the commission. And and second, Eric, we're going to miss you because you kept me when I was chair on the straight and narrow with making sure that I called the things right and shut my mouth when I was supposed to. So all that is greatly appreciated. I wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
You know, Commissioner Gerard, I you back on the commission here with this almost 11:00 PM meeting is bringing back the old memories of us.
Just soon forget about them.
No, I thank you for the sentiments. I that was that was going to be my joke for you tonight since since you came back. Commissioner Young?
No updates, but thank you, Eric. You've done good.
All right, thank you. And I I I don't have any updates, but I I just want to say, you know, the the number of years with with many of you, I I have never worked on a political committee or board, and I've been on many of them, as you know, that I think is so collaborative, respective of other people's opinions, even when we disagree. And and this this group is phenomenal. So Kelly, you've got a great group of people here you get to join, and Paul gets to come back too. And, you know, I'm I'm taking a break. Maybe someday, if there's an opening down the road, I'll I'll look at applying again. But but yeah, I'm gonna I'm gonna have some cool things. You'll find out in a few months. So with that, other business is done unless anyone else has anything. We can move to item number 11, adjournment. Commissioner Young?
Move that we adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? There, Commissioner Brink seconded it. That is a non-debatable motion. Karen, can you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Chair Langus?
Aye, motion carries. We adjourn at 10:43 PM. Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Eric.